We are recording.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Huffington School Board meeting for Thursday, March 4th, 2021. We have a full board, actually almost a full board with us here this evening. We have Rob Nato, Norm Gupel, Andrea Folsom, and myself, Jim O'Brien. We'll be joined by Seth Aframe a little later during the meeting. And then we have our student reps Juliet Shahadeh and Mia Richter. Thank you so much for joining us. And Michelle Clark, our business administrator, and Mr. Steve Chamberlain, superintendent of schools. So thank you all very much. We're going to start with the pledge of allegiance.
We're going to change it up a little bit. Today, we're showing a picture of the high school with a flag and some roof work. Can you see that flag?
We sure can. So what's going on, Steve, in the picture?
This is the extended roof work that we did as our first round of an alt. It's the front by the bus drop off heading through. And so all this will be done. And as Mr. Gupel likes to say, we're going to be leak free at the high school.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Leak free sounds like a very good goal. Appreciate that. All right, so we're here today, once again, meeting as a board fully remotely. So there's no physical location for our meeting this evening. And we're able to do this because of the governor's emergency declaration due to the COVID-19 pandemic and emergency orders that allows for public bodies such as the Huffington School Board to conduct our business fully remotely. And so we do have both a Zoom link as well as a telephone call in number that was provided as part of the notice for this meeting. Members of the public are able to to attend the meeting and hear the conversation in real time. We also have two opportunities during the course of this meeting for members of the public to provide public comment to the board. And those, there'll be one coming up here shortly at the front end of the meeting. And then there's a second opportunity towards the end of the meeting for members of the public to provide comments. All other aspects of RSA 91A or the state's right to know law will be followed, as well as minutes of the meeting will be made available per the statute. And then for those who have attended or watched a board meeting, the only other change that you, well, aside from being fully remote, that you might notice is that for every vote that the board does, they're all roll call votes. And so that does take a few extra moments to move through. So with that, I'll ask Steve, are there any additions or deletions in the agenda here this evening?
So hopefully I put in a, just an addition to our schedule, be nominations slated Mr. George Sable as the assistant track coach. And then when we get to interscholastic sports, we're just going to just talk briefly about allowing a few of family members to support their end of seasons awards in person in the gym. So those are the only additions.
Perfect. And then any correspondence this evening?
I think there were three correspondents or so that were placed in the meeting folder provided to the board.
Great. And so we have a couple sets, and I just lost my agenda. Excuse me, a couple sets of minutes to approve this evening. And so I would ask if there is a motion for the Huffington School Board to approve the minutes of the public hearing held on February 18th, 2021.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none. Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is yes. So those minutes are approved. Is there a motion for the Huffington School Board to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting held on February 18th, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on those nets? All right, seeing none. Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is yes. So those minutes are approved. And last set, is there a motion for the Huffington School Board to approve the minutes of the non-public session held on February 18th, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none. Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is yes. So those minutes are approved. So this brings us to our first public comment portion of the evening. And so those who are attending, if you have a comment that you wish to provide to the board, just move your cursor, mouse pointer, whatever it is towards the bottom of your screen. There should be a raised hand button. If you, if you press on that, that lets us know that you have a comment that you'd like to give. And I would just ask those who do give comments, just to provide us with your name and address, if you would, for the minutes. And then if you can, try to limit your comments to about three minutes. So with that, if anybody has a comment, I'll give it a minute for a hand to go up. And as I said, there's a, there's a second opportunity towards the end of the meeting as well for public comment. All right, so Darlene Gildersleeve. There we go, darling.
You hear me? Okay?
We sure can.
Okay. I want to talk about returning to in-person learning 100%. Students with serious underlying conditions. I realize that there is a concern, you know, for their health. However, they can do synchronous remote learning, just like my daughter has done. Whenever she feels, you know, quite ill from her bone tumor and other underlying medical conditions, she just hops right on a computer with her, her school. And whenever she's well, which has been all week, thank God, and now part of last week, she's been attending 100% in person. All the students in her private school have been doing really, really well, attending 100% in person. They are isolated and lonely at home. And I'm serious mental health issues are arising in our youth. I'm really, really, really disturbed by the calls and messages that I'm getting from parents all around the state. And actually, in Huffington, there are parents that are reaching out to me. And they're, because there's still a stigma with mental health, unfortunately, they don't want to talk to the school board and come out and especially in public input to talk about it. And a resident last week, she actually got on public input and said that it was inappropriate, the comments that I made with her child nearby. But I'll tell you what, if you don't talk about suicide prevention and you don't talk about mental health in town, one fine day, it might be your child that has an issue. So we really have to talk about it. And, and help assist these kids that are, you know, really truly suffering. It's painful for me when I get these messages and phone calls from parents that are crushed and their kids are shattered. And I feel like the board and administration is not doing enough to move towards 100% in person. Not only, you know, I know a lot of people in town are concerned about academics. But me, I'm more concerned with how are these kids even going to focus on academics when their mental health is so bad? So I, I really, really wish and hope that you'll take my comments to heart and move towards 100% in-person learning. And, and like I said, I have a child with very serious medical conditions. And all she does is they, she has a laptop at home and she opens it up. And then the laptop at school is facing her educators in her class. And so she can participate and not miss out on any assignments and not miss out on communicating with her teachers and her peers when she can't. So I mean, there's that workaround. The other thing is I was, I was able to dial into a few meetings this week at the legislature. And I'm really concerned at the amount of money that the New Hampshire School Board Association is getting from our taxpayer money. And what the New Hampshire School Board Association is doing is they're sending lobbyists to the State House to testify against the best interest of our students. So to the parents that are listening, if you can log on to some hearings involving any educational matters, and especially to education committee hearings for the House and the Senate, you can hear for yourself, the lobbyist for the New Hampshire School Board Association actively speaking against special education, kids with disabilities, and all kinds of educational matters. I find it to be very upsetting that my taxpayer monies are being sent to the, for the budget in Huffington, only to be turned around and used against my own kid. And I'm pretty horrified about that. So I think, yeah, that, that's all, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, darling. Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Thanks.
And I'm not seeing any other hands raised. And so I am going to close the public comment portion. And as I said, there will be another opportunity for public comments towards the end of our agenda this evening. And so I think I'll, well, the next item in the agenda is, is school board comments. And so I'm going to ask our, our student reps to start, kick us off if they have any, any comments that they'd like to give tonight. So I don't know, Mia or Juliet, either of you want to start or either of you have comments?
I have a quick plug for the National Honor Society Blood Drive. It's March 17th from eight to two in the gym at the high school. And I believe you can, I believe the link to sign up is in the HOC news. But you could also email me and I could send you information about it if anyone wants to sign up to donate blood.
Perfect. Steve, is that, is that a link that we could put onto the, is it on the district website or could we do that?
We'll make sure we do that. So thank you. Great idea.
Yeah, thank you, Mia. Juliet, anything this evening?
I don't have any comments. Thank you, though.
Yeah, thank you. All right, any board member?
Do you want to go first, Andrea? You want me to go first? You want me to, okay, sure. I just want to say thank you to the PTA last night and thank you, Steve and Andrea, for joining me to go over our budget with them. It was great to see all of them and really have a good discussion with them. And thank you to the PTA for all that they do for our community and for the district. I want to thank the community for all their phone calls and all their emails over the last couple of weeks. It's been a great discussion. A lot of these community members just want to have the voice heard. And it's great to have that with them privately and to hear their thoughts and to listen. Real quick, just my condolences to the Parr family. I realized that Coach Dan Parr passed away. And what's unique about that is Dan Parr was actually the coach of Hopkinton's men's basketball team when they won their first and only championship. That's going to change hopefully down the road with an additional championship. But what's unique about it is Coach Parr was actually one of the basketball coaches at my high school, at St. Thomas. And he brought out the best in the students. And he was the Bill Belichick of men's basketball with a lot of championships. So my condolences to him. And when I first met Steve Chamberlain, we did a background check and I talked to him a little about basketball. He coached against Dan Parr and got crushed. And it was, it was a, it was a really funny conversation and, but just a full circle here, knowing that he was part of the Hopkinton School District and then at my high school. Last thing is Jim, a big shout out to Joan Fonsby's class. Their book came out today. It's the number one bookseller in New York Times. All the students came out with their stories today and a lot of great photos in it. I look forward to reading it. My daughter was very proud to bring this home today. And just, this is the type of work I like to see, a lot of creative photos. I'm going to ask Bill next year that he puts his own photo in here at some point. But great job by students, great job by Joan. It put a smile on my face after a long week. So thank you, guys.
Thanks, Norm. Robert, Andrea?
I can go next. So I just wanted to, I know we've received a lot of emails and I've had a lot of great conversations with community members over the past year, but especially over the past week, a couple of weeks. And so I wanted to just publicly go over a couple of things. I know sometimes it can be tricky tuning into these meetings. You know, our meetings are sometimes every week, sometimes every other week. They're supposed to be every other week, but it's been an exciting year. And so I just wanted to touch publicly on a couple of things that we've talked about in our, in our public meetings. But they're also kind of consistently going on in other meetings between the school board with administration, between administration and leaders and teachers and staff. So, yeah, so a couple of things. I know that there has been chatter about spacing in schools and that's been a big sticking point. And we're all worried about, do we need three feet? Do we need six feet? And so we actually reached out to, our nurses reached out to the COVID-19 education liaison, who is with the Bureau of Infectious Disease and Control at the New Hampshire Division of Public Health Services. And the, the information that we got back from her was, and I quote, "The guidance has not shifted from the start of the school year. Currently, the recommendation is still six feet. But when unable to do six feet, no closer than three feet, it's important to know that if students are closer than six feet within a classroom, there will be more students excluded due to being a close contact if there are positive cases." And I know that several times this year, we've had some positive cases. And we've actually been able to avoid having a large amount of either students or teachers needing to quarantine or self-isolate because we've stuck to the, the six feet of separation between students. I do hope that folks have a chance to look through the new CDC updates. So they, they came out on February 12th and they've continued to update them. The most recent update was February 26th. And that's the operational strategy for K through 12 schools through phase mitigation, which is a very exciting title. But more specifically to Hopkinton, excuse me. So if we take out the kind of the three feet and the six feet issue, the biggest thing is the, the new CDC guidelines talk about different levels of risk, basically, which is something we've talked about all year long. And so there's low transmission, moderate transmission, substantial, and high transmission rates. So right now, we're, we are in a substantial transmission rate. It's orange. The recommendation right now from the CDC is elementary schools and hybrid learning and/or with reduced attendance and middle and high schools in hybrid learning or reduced attendance and physical distancing of six feet or more is required. So we're in line with that. And this week, I think it's great that we were able, sort of speaking to Darlene's point, we were able to start doing our hybrid synchronous at the middle high school. We've offered remote option all year long for all students at all schools. And for high school students, middle high school students, we now have the synchronous hybrid option. So you are continuing to go through the curriculum throughout the week, whether or not you're in school or out of school. So just to touch quickly on current Hopkinton School District planning, just to make things super clear. So Steve talked a couple of weeks ago that he and Michelle were able to secure some more Title IV grants. I believe that's correct, Steve, their Title IV, to get some additional hours of supports for our elementary school students. So we're happy to be able to offer that. We've heard about throughout the year, we've had the middle high school move through a couple of different, we've tried a couple of different things, and now we've landed on our synchronous hybrid. And that's something that Mr. Kelly and Ms. Gagnon have said that they will continue to talk with the board about. And they're going to continue to look at it, just as they've done all year long, to move forward so that we can, you know, our intention is to get as many kids into the schools as safely as I, as we can with our mitigation strategies. And then we were also talking with, let's see, I'm losing my notes. So we're, we're also continuing to plan and have meetings. We've been having meetings with the administration, the HEA, and teachers, you know, for increased attendance at the elementary schools. Just depending on, again, our, our risk levels, the CDC guidelines, and changing circumstances and moving forward. And so I just wanted to make this last point really clear. So it's, it's our intention, barring some catastrophic occurrence, it's, it's our intention right now to be open for all schools and all students and staff as of August 30, 2021, if not sooner. We cannot guarantee sooner. But right now, that is definitely our intention. I know that there have been, you know, other things that have been thrown around and worries and concerns. I totally get that. But I just wanted to make these points really clear. We are having those meetings. They are ongoing. And it is our intention to, to open in a full in-person. You know, we may still be wearing masks, but we're hoping with the vaccinations that we're just hearing today are going to be hopefully happening much more quickly. And again, it depends on if teachers are getting the single shot, the Johnson Johnson single shot, or if they need the double shot, which does take longer. But our intention is to get all the kids back into school. You know, it's, it's not our hope to keep them out. So thanks for letting me just ramble on there. But I just wanted to make those things very clear because I know sometimes it can feel a little cloak and daggers. And that's not our intention. It's just the nature of adaptive management and continuing to try to best manage this entire situation in an ongoing pandemic. So thanks.
Thanks, Andrea. Rob?
I have nothing further to add, Jim. Thank you, Andrea. Sounds very good.
Perfect. I, I, I don't either. So with that, we'll move on in the agenda and go under presentations and staff reports. And this is exciting because we've been talking about it, I think, for, for a while now is to, to talk about First Robotics and to hear how that has been going in the pandemic. And so Steve, I know that we are inviting people up. And so I leave it to you. There's Charlene.
Yes, I just, and thank you. And thanks to the, to the board for just taking a different look at some program during a global pandemic. You know, it came across where we accepted some dollars from Rotary and it had to update at Rotary about Charlene and her work. And I just think it's great. Charlene, thank you so much for, for coming and being promoted. And I'm very, as a superintendent, I'm just very curious about how we do all, what you do in this environment. I know the board is too. So I'll turn it over to you. If you need to, you can share your screen or you can just talk about your time. But thanks for joining us.
Thank you for inviting me tonight. I do have something to share, so it will.
Hopefully it works for you because.
We'll give it a shot. How about that? Do we see an Ozram Team 1922?
We sure do with I love it.
Great for technology, huh? Thank you again for inviting me to present this evening. My name is Charlene Betts. I'm the coach for Ozram. A First Robotics competition team comprised of 13 students from Hopkinton Middle High and John Stark Regional High Schools. Along with having won multiple awards in New Hampshire and the New England First District over the years, Ozram has traveled to Atlanta and Detroit to compete with teams from all over the world. We are currently in our 15th year and look, look forward to many more. A typical year involves off-season events, community outreach opportunities, donuts, and pizza. This year has had none of those. A typical competition season would start with a kickoff in early January at SNHU where the game would be revealed. The team would use the next week to thoroughly read the game manual, strategize gameplay, and prototype ideas for the robot. Over the following five weeks, the team would build elements to simulate the competition field and design, CAD, assemble, program, and test their robot. This would be followed by as much practice in operating the robot as time allowed, AKA never enough. At the same time, spirit members would design game-themed t-shirts, pins, and a banner for our pit at competitions. They would also update the team website and brochure with the logos of current sponsors. Ozram would then attend to regional competitions with the hopes of moving on to the district championships and ultimately Worlds. This season, the kickoff was virtual. Of the three challenges offered to teams, Ozram opted for the challenge that uses last year's robot. While it may seem easier because it was built on last year's experience, having had a shortened season and eight members graduate in 2020 means that the remaining students have had lots to learn and unusual environment in which to apply that learning. After last year's competition season was cut short, the team was unable to meet in person. While not knowing what to expect in 2021, students went ahead and redesigned portions of the robot, cutting up new parts that have been fabricated and assembled onto the original base. Once known as Tin Man 15, the robot has now been dubbed Tin Man 15 dot two. Late summer, small robots purchased and given to each student so that the team members could learn about programming. It gave us a focus for virtual meetings that, which helped to emulate the social aspect of the team. Each member was allowed to work at their own level of ability and interest with a few really taking to it and one student even filling the position of lead programmer this season. With schools having many days remote, it became harder for students to spend yet more time online and the number of active members waned. I anticipate that most of our members will return once regular in-person meetings resume. We have been able to meet safely in person when needed for assembling and testing of the robot and the filming of videos for the challenges. Each member attending in person completes a health screen form and has their temperature taken at the beginning of the meeting. Masks are required and social distancing is maintained as much as possible. We have been trying our best to keep up team spirit. One of the mentors created Ozram masks for the team and has been a great way to help us feel that we are all in it together during the pandemic. First has also worked at keeping up enthusiasm for the program by supplying teams with logo masks and shock towels. Several of the students collaborated on a team video. It includes clips of members sharing what Ozram needs to them and has beginning and ending animations made by one of the students. It can be found on the team's website along with lots of information about Ozram. Over the fall, we also updated our brochure and created letters to send to local companies requesting their support. The response showed how fortunate we are to have generous sponsors such as our namesake, Ozrim Slovenia. Beyond the local support for individual teams, the first program receives funding from New Hampshire's VAE Systems as well as NASA. For a second year, Ozram qualified for the STEM grant provided by the New Hampshire Department of Education. After having spent a portion of the grant on first registration fees, the team will now look into using some of the funds to purchase equipment and supplies that will create the opportunity for students to see their design process through to the fabrication of parts using a CNC machine or 3D printer. In addition, the grant may enable the team to acquire a trailer which would provide safer transportation of the robot, extra parts, supplies, and spirit items to competitions and community outreach events. While New Hampshire was unable to host an in-person Governor's Cup in the fall, the team competed virtually for judged awards. Several students contributed to a group interview. The students found it to be rather difficult, but presented themselves well and came away with a greater understanding of how to prepare for similar events in the future. Along with tuition funds awarded by New Hampshire at the Governor's Cup, there are many college scholarships available to students involved in the first program. This season, the First Robotics Competition is comprised of judged awards similar to, similar, similar to typical seasons as well as virtual at-home challenges. The judged awards include categories for excellence in engineering, industrial design, and autonomous achievement. Ozram has just finished submitting two photos of the robot, a CAD drawing, a video of an autonomous routine, and a flyer highlighting aspects of the robot for the judged awards. The next step for the team is to create videos for the skills portion of the at-home challenge. These videos will show the robot completing five different courses using either autonomous control or student drivers at the helm. Along with the team awards, there is also an award given to individuals first participants. Ozram has nominated two students for the Dean's List Award. Good luck to Ben from Hopkinton and Logan from Ware. After this spring's official competition season wraps up in April, Ozram will have many options of things for the team to do. Oz Ram will have many options of things for the team to do. These include challenges using a mini bot provided by the New England FIRST program or creating demonstration robots for community outreach. Another focus for the team will be recruiting new members. Students interested in the STEM topics of science, technology, engineering and math along with art, which turns them all into steam, are encouraged to join and find out what Oz Ram and robots and robots are all about. As we look ahead to the fall of 2021 and the competition season of 2022, the team is hopeful that in-person meetings will soon be the norm and exciting events will once again take place. While the effects of the pandemic may have felt like a tornado at times, Oz Ram is confident that there will be a rainbow. I'd like to finish by thanking the school and community for their support for Oz Ram and encourage everyone to visit our website. Thank you.
Charlene, that was that was great. Thank you so much. And do you mind if there's any questions? Will you take some?
That would be fine.
Perfect. So any any members of the board have questions?
I don't have any questions, but I took it a chance to see the robot in action at the last PTA Fund Fair, which wasn't last year, but the year before. And it's really astounding what these students are able to make. And I mean, it is, it's far beyond me. And it's it's really impressive and I I so appreciate all of your work as well. I think that this is such a benefit to so many kids. So thanks for coming and presenting to us. I really appreciated it.
Thank you for having me.
Charlene, thank you for coming again. I mean, when you came to the board meeting, I think it was a year ago and you brought the robot. It was just very exciting to see. And next time in person, I hope the kids bring it bring it again because it's it's just exciting to see that kids using their creative minds and all collaborating together. And to be able to still have this during a public health crisis, you know, thank you for leading these these students so they have this type of engagement with each other. Thank you for all the hard work you're doing. It's great presentation. Thank you for your time.
My pleasure.
I don't have any questions, Charlene. I've seen this in action for a long time. Great program. I think the thing that, you know, to remind people of is that it's not just the engineering part. I was always amazed at the art and management that goes into it and kids with all different skill sets who can be a part of this program, even if they aren't being programmers. And, you know, it's really a cool group of kids that that produce a great product and obviously with good leadership.
Thank you.
And, you know, we we get every, you know, every couple of weeks we we get to approve and accept, you know, donations from generous companies and individuals. And so I just want to, I know fundraising isn't easy and it's not always fun, but it's wonderful to see the support from, you know, businesses across the state supporting your work. So congratulations on that.
Oh, we're quite fortunate in that.
Well, thank you so much for joining us. We really, really do appreciate it. And it's it is cool. And we have been talking, you know, for the past couple of months about how how on earth you're pulling off in a pandemic. The the FIRST Robotics, so it's it's great to come and get a peek under the hood. So thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Charlene, if you want to stop sharing, then I can do the rest for you. A quick story while you're doing that. One of the long trips for FIRST was to Orlando for the for the Worlds. And Will Renault called and said, Steve, we got an opportunity to see the Space Shuttle take off. Can we stay an extra time? And I, of course, called the superintendent and Will said, Steve, didn't matter what your answer was. We were staying no matter what. But so that was well, if you knew him. But Charlene, thank you so much. And it was absolutely wonderful to have this presentation.
My pleasure. Thank you all so much.
Good night.
Good night.
And but some of the Hopkinton High School students and John Stark were at watched the Space Shuttle in Orlando.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah, very, very cool. And this was one of our first collaborations with another school. Since then, we've done a lot. But it was a John Stark, Hopkinton, one of our first collaborations.
So next on the agenda for presentation is we have a progress report with the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. And so Steve, is that you walking us through that?
Promoting Chris. So Chris is coming up and just as he gets settled, ready to go, I just, I had a chance to read it a couple of times. We talked about leadership today and Chris will highlight, but it really is a great summary of all the work we've done in the last few years, curriculum, facility, safety and security. But Chris, thank you for actually writing. This was not your first NIASC report. So you've done a few of them in your time, but I'll turn it over to you. But thank you.
Sure, thank you. So I I don't know if you've had time to read it. It's 38 pages. It's a rather long report. It's probably the longest report I've written for NIASC, but we had a lot to say. And I guess I'll I'll work backwards here. And if you take a look at the last page, if you have an opportunity to do so, I I think that's the page that really speaks volumes to the amount of work that's been going on in our building and at a district level. One of the things we had to do with the five-year report, which we didn't have to do for the two-year, was to go through the two-year report and the five-year report and take a look at the number of recommendations we had and take a look at how many were completed from two years from the two-year report through the five-year report. And you can see there we had quite a large jump. You know, to at the two-year report, three years ago, we had had six recommendations completed out of the 52 that came out of that report. And 52 can seem daunting. I mean, I know it was for me, being the first time that I had gone through this as a school administrator. I had gone through it once before at Concord High School as a teacher. But it's rather daunting when you see 52 recommendations and you're asking yourself, how are we going to do all this work? But I but I felt I felt great after taking a look at what we had, what I had put together for the five-year report and saw that that number jumped to six recommendations completed up to 21. A lot of those recommendations really revolved around the curriculum work that we've been doing, assessment and instruction, and also around the facilities project. And of course, there's still some work to do there. And in some of the in standards five, six and seven that start to address some of that facility work, as you have a chance to take a look at it, you'll see that it will say that it's in progress. But I I kind of chunked it chunked it out because there were there were parts of it that had steps to it. So there's there's some recommendations like we've completed half of the recommendation, but because it's a facilities project, not all of it's done. So we've done the roof. We've done the security of of the front entrance of the building that was a part of that was a piece of the recommendations that if the bond didn't pass, you know, what was the backup plan to take care of the safety and security concerns? So some of that we've been able to address, but we're not done the science labs yet. So, you know, those are some things that you'll see in there that I kind of pieced out as saying, this was completed, but this is planned for the future because it's happening this summer. So really proud of the staff with the amount of work that they've done with in regards to the curriculum. We've been, this year, it's been a little harder to focus on assessment as one of our building goals. But it will be one that will continue work as as we are planning and very much agree with Andrea that that's my plan is to be back in full come August, the end of August, early September. But if you continue to take a look at that table, you know, 53% in the two-year report of the recommendations were still in progress. That's dropped 17 points down to 35 and a half or 35.8. So we've made some progress there. And we do have one one, one recommendation that we rejected in the two-year report and I've still marked it as rejected. And that that one you could find on page 17 of the report. And it has to deal with the teachers collaborating with special education and school counselors in in developing a formal plan for collaboration. And the reason why we really felt like that wasn't a recommendation we wanted to to work on is because we really feel that we do that very well already without a formal plan. You know, we're a very small shop, as you know. It's 50 steps for me to go see the building coordinator of special ed, which is Holly Sharon. She's in the office. She comes to see me or Rebecca, or she's, you know, you can see her frequently in the in the guidance office, speaking to school counselors. Lot of hallway conversations. But we've also implemented the school, the specific design, specifically designed instruction model, implemented that in the areas of English and mathematics. So we have a special education teacher in our supported math classes in the seventh and eighth grade level and in the high school level. And we have case managers working in high school English classes as well as middle school English classes. And there's a lot of collaboration that happens there as well. So we don't have a formal plan, but it is a focus of ours. So if you take a look at that table and you see, or wondering, you know, what does that mean that we rejected something? It's only because we feel like we're doing a pretty good job at it already. And there's a few there that, you know, we haven't taken any action on really because of time. There were a couple that we were able to move on. So, you know, that dropped a little bit for us as well. And I think if you take a look at the end of the report, there were some interim report questions that were sent to me over the last couple of years as we continue to update them with special projects reports. There's a lot of information in there. It's a rather long narrative of the work that we've been doing. And and really, I would have to say that's like the meat and potatoes of this report. There's a lot of good information in there that that highlights a lot of the good work that we've been doing from an instructional and assessment point of view and also from a district point of view with our facilities. So, you know, I didn't want to go through each page and, you know, and flip through. It's just a lot of, it was a lot of work to put this together, but it was a lot of work to to complete in order to have the right information to put together. So now we will wait. I mean, they're behind on on getting some of these reports read. Usually in the next, they they meet quarterly to review all of these reports. So this will be in the second quarter that the review this. So hopefully by the end of the school year or sometime during the summer, we'll we'll have their response to this report. But I'm happy to answer any questions if you did have a chance to to take a look at it. I'm happy to answer those questions.
Thank you. I just would like to highlight in Jim remembers for all the building project presentations, the accreditation, what a different report it would have been if the community didn't really, really stepped up and supported the building project. So I always appreciated this community because it was an easier report once that bond passed. So, Chris, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Chris, thank you for the report. I I read, I I read a bunch of it and skimmed the rest because it is quite in-depth and it is a great job. It's not like a nothing to put something like that together. So it's very good, very full of information. Rob?
In the support materials as well.
Perfect.
Yeah, I just congratulations, Chris. I know when that those first came out, it was a lot, a lot of stuff to do. And you guys are definitely plugging away. So that's terrific. I thought, you know, I just, and this probably is talked about at a previous board meeting, but you know, the process to this process, I think it's important that people understand that it starts with a self-assessment and that's almost a two-year project within the school and seven different groups all looking at and analyzing things like, you know, assessment in the building and, you know, all these categories. And then we put that or that report goes forward. And then when the visiting team comes, they're essentially assessing that self-study to sort of, you know, if you, you know, are you being, are you, everything you're saying accurate and both in your strengths and weaknesses? And it's it's quite the undertaking and then the follow-up. God bless you, Chris. It's a lot of work.
Yeah, and I'll be I'll be interested to find out what the next visit will be like because I know they're talking about making some changes to how the visit is handled and conducted. If you remember, or members of our staff, remember they they come in on a Sunday afternoon. We do a rather large presentation to the visiting committee and then they're in the classrooms, hallways, offices, meeting with school board members, superintendent over the next three days before they leave. And when when they leave, we all breathe a sigh of relief and get a lot of sleep because those three days, I can't tell you, I slept a lot while they were in the building. But as as much as sometimes I hem and haw at the fact that I have to write another NIASC report, it is a, writing this report is is great professional development for me. Just to go through this, one, to stop and realize how much work we're doing because sometimes we get lost in the weeds of everything, of everything we're trying to do. And on top of what we've had to deal with since last March, just gave me a great sense of pride in the work that that our building is doing. And we still have growth to do. It doesn't stop here, but looking forward to starting to focus on some of these other recommendations that they have given us and and making our school better.
Andrea?
Yeah, Chris, this is really, I thought the nuance captured in this was really interesting. I don't know if I enjoyed reading through it, but it was very interesting. It's it's a great long report. I was wondering too, and I'm glad that folks will be able to look through it. I was wondering if you could speak just a little bit to why we do, you know, why we need to do the NIASC report? Aside from us improving as a as a school and district, why is this important that we that we do and that we stay on top of it?
Sure, no, I appreciate the the question. Well, NIASC is the oldest accrediting body for colleges and high schools in the country. There are several throughout the country, but NIASC, New England Association of Schools and Colleges is the oldest. And there were seven standards that they critique us by. And some of those are within the school community and are building our facilities and how the school community supports its schools through their budget. And and then the other standards really revolve around what we do every day, which is the CIA, the curriculum instruction and assessment pieces and school culture. And so when we look at that process, we begin that with, I actually, actually, Rob was one of the people, one of the teachers that helped to head up our staff in organizing, getting ready for this, this visit in this accreditation process. But we essentially had seven subcommittees. Every staff member in the building had to be on a committee. And each one of those committees headed up one of those standards. And in the first standard, it really talks about our core values and beliefs. And so two years prior to the NIASC Association coming into the building, you know, we went through a revision process of our of our CV BLI. And it was a rather extensive process. I think it took just over a year and then we brought it to the school board and they approved it, I think, in in June of 2015. So and and we'll look at revising that again. We'll go through it again and make sure it's still good. But it's important for our students and and as a senior to graduate from accredited high school. There needs to be some oversight to what we're doing in our building, how our teachers are writing and delivering curriculum, how we're assessing our students, what does the culture of our building look like? Are we doing everything we can socially, emotionally for our students? And as I said, it is a, it is a daunting process, but it is a good process for us to go through. Because as you heard Rob say, we have to, it all starts with that self-assessment. You know, if we can't look ourselves in the in the mirror and say, okay, we're really good with this, but we can improve in this area, then we're not learning, you know, and we're not trying to get better and we don't practice what we preach, right? So if we're asking our students to work hard and learn, but we don't take the opportunity to stop and reflect about our own teaching and practices in the building, we're just not going to get better. And like, for instance, one of the areas suggestions it talked about was how do we get out to the community, inform them more about our core values and beliefs and learning expectations and our overarching competencies? And as I was going through this report, as I said, this is a nice thing for me to reflect upon. You know, we have a program of studies nights coming up next Tuesday on March the 9th. And, you know, we'll take some time to actually walk our our eighth grade parents through that and then we'll look to do it again with our sixth grade. We've never done that before, but I'm going to add because it's a natural place to put it. So it that's why it's nice for us just to go through that reflection. And that's just one example. But but if schools don't, if they don't have their accreditation, it doesn't look good on a senior's application to colleges. And the last thing that I want to be involved with is a school that's not accredited as a building principal because our students work too hard to get that high school diploma over 12 years and to to get there without it, without a, without a, without an accredited or to graduate from a non-accredited institution is not good. And one of my, one of my very good friends that I went to college with, he went to Stevens High School. And at that time, when he graduated in 1991, it was not accredited. And that's really where all of the state funding issues really began to come into play. And he almost didn't not get into college because it was not an accredited high school. And that was a state college that wasn't a private. So that that really sits with me because never would I want any one of our students to be put in that position. And I don't think we ever will be. I do, I do think we have the support of the community. We, you know, we have the support of the school board. We have hardworking staff members in our building. So, but I'm not going to lie. I mean, I was a little nervous that if we didn't get this facilities project on where it was going to go because part of that facilities project was directly connected to how do we deliver our curriculum? And that's the science classrooms that update. And that's the science classrooms, that updating those science classrooms was an essential piece to this report and everything that they were looking at. And it will be great that by the time they get those science rooms completed and they come back, you know, they'll only be four years old. And everything else we've done, I'm hoping facilities is not even on or even considered as an issue. Because then maybe this report's only 14 pages and not 38. But it's essential. I mean, it shows that what we're doing is good work. It's, it's being looked at by a body of our peers. It's being approved by a body of our peers. And the recommendations are good recommendations. It's good to have somebody else come in and take a look at what you're doing when they know what, they know your business, right? So.
Norm? So they come every four years is when they come, Chris?
No, it's every 10 years they come.
Oh, okay.
So really what the, you do a two-year progress report after they finish their, their visit. And then you typically do a five-year report, which you have in front of you. But I, we had to do special progress reports because of the facilities. So there were several special progress reports over the last several years that, that I've shared with the board and had to write up, but it was mainly all about facilities.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments for Chris? And Steve, this, you said it's in the supporting documents folder. Is there anywhere else that we keep these reports? So the members of the community could look at this one, even past ones if they're interested?
Yeah, they'll go to the school board under reports, meetings. So we'll put it in support materials and we'll bump it up.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate that.
And Andrew, there's a, there's a present, there should be a presentation on there that I made in 2016, a PowerPoint presentation, and that will give you a little bit more information about each one of the standards. And who was on the committees then? You'll see Rob was part of that, obviously. So if you want to take a look at that and have any other questions, I'd be happy to, to meet with you and answer those.
Yeah, I appreciate that. My question is more also for the broader community. Because sometimes I think we hear a lot of, we hear a lot of acronyms and we don't always know what they all mean or how important some of these things are. So I really appreciate your explanation. It's helpful.
All right. Well, thanks, Chris.
Welcome.
Have a great night. We appreciate it.
Yes, I think I'm, am I coming back?
I'm not sure. We'll keep you posted.
All right. So for those following along, we are on agenda item nine, items for board discussion. And so we're going to start with operating and learning in a pandemic. And Steve, I'm going to hand it over to you. Well, for most of it, but for the first two, a couple of updates on cases and then the education model at Harold Martin.
Sure. Thank you. So what I've tried to do is every board meeting and then I follow up with an email to the community for those who don't attend. At Harold Martin School, we have five children right now in a travel quarantine and three due to an exposure quarantine, but no active cases. At Maple Street School, we have nine in the travel quarantine and two with exposures quarantine. And at high school, we had, up until today, we had just traveled quarantine and we just had one today through an exposure. So no active cases right now in our schools, but we do have a couple that we're watching, waiting for some test results. And then I'll follow that up with an email to the community. I'm going to, the next top, next bump up is Mr. Bill Corozan. So as Bill comes forward, so we really do never stop trying to, trying to make things better, trying to respond to, to needs in the community. A lot of what I like in this work is really nothing is off the table. We, the leadership team, we bounce up off each other. And just Bill's going to talk about just some thoughts about early elementary that is an area that we've always been concerned about, even back to the August 1st. The very first presentation of Back to the School that I made about the concerns about early elementary. Bill, I'll turn it over to you and thanks for bumping it up.
My pleasure. Thanks for having me on. I'm doing okay? Sound all right, Steve?
You are. You sound great.
I've had some wireless issues off and on. So, so thank you for having me here. Well, as we know, a significant portion of this year, one fact we can agree on has been remote, a big portion of the year. And the instructional year that hasn't been remote has been the hybrid model, which, you know, comes out to about 50% instruction. We also know, I think that our youngest students, kindergarten, first grade students, we're talking about tonight, really have probably more difficulty, certainly with remote. And of course, everybody suffers a little bit from obviously not having a full-time instruction. So I don't want to talk about catching up or kids being behind necessarily, but we just know it's common sense that, you know, it's been a rough year and really since March, it's been a full calendar year and then there'll be a little more of that as well. You know, one thing I should mention too, our youngest kids are preschool kids. The funny thing, we don't talk about it much, but preschool has been normal all year because their schedule is already sort of shortened. You know, kids either go two or three days generally, some go five. But they go just mornings or afternoons. So we haven't had to adjust their schedule at all. The pandemic almost didn't happen for them, school-wise, not quite. We do actually have a few kids preschool remote, believe it or not, that have, you know, some conditions and Kendra and Marissa have done a great job dealing with them. But anyway, tonight we're talking about kindergarten and first grade. So we've been trying to really just, it's been the theme of the year, right? Balancing instruction with the need to keep everybody safe, both adults and especially kids, as well as, you know, teaching social, emotional learning. We'd rather not change, as Andrew talked about earlier, the six-foot model. We think that is best practice at this point in the pandemic. So we'd rather not go down to three or less than six. So the question would be then, how could we bring more kids in, give them more instruction and still maintain the six-foot model, six-foot distancing model? So the idea, and it is mainly an idea right now that we just wanted to present to the board, because there is, I'll talk about, there's a lot of tricky parts to this, is we would hire an extra classroom teacher for both kindergarten and extra classroom teacher for first grade, obviously just for about two and a half months. I'll let Steve talk about where that money's coming from, but in this year, it's not going to be a very long period of time, obviously. So we would have to add to the staff in order to do this. And what that would do is it would move, spread kids out among extra class. So kindergarten right now is running with three kindergarten classes. Remember, one kindergarten teacher went to teach remote. So we have three classes right now. We'd add another one, so it'd be four. First grade is going with four classes right now. They're a little bit bigger and they would go to five. So from three to four and from four to five kindergarten and first grade. Now, numbers are already a little bit lower in K and one, just based on, you know, generally enrollment in K and one is a little bit smaller anyway. We tend to have move-ins as the years go on, as people can afford houses and that sort of thing, they tend to move in. And so that's, you know, our original enrollment is a little bit smaller in K and one. You know, plus we've had a, you know, fairly high amount of parents who chose homeschooling this year. I think primarily for health, safety reasons, as well as remote and as well as private school. I think some parents who wanted, you know, full-time understandably. So it's already a bit smaller. So if we were to add the teacher in each grade and everything works out perfectly, we're able to hire a couple of people, we would then have class sizes around the same as the hybrid second and third grade. So it'd be around 10, 11, 12 kids full-time, where this just wouldn't work in second and third grade and probably up through the grades. Because numbers, even if we added a teacher to each, you know, say second and third grade, not that we necessarily could afford that, but even if we did, we would not really be able to have class size low enough to maintain the six-foot. K and one is the exception. And we all know that K and one is probably, as I think we've talked about a lot at board meetings and elsewhere. You know, that's, that's where the kids have probably suffered the most during the remote time. Space is obviously an issue, but I think we can solve that. I won't go into detail unless the board has questions about that right now. But it would take some sacrifice, some creativity. I believe we can do it. I wish we could use the addition. You know, if you walk out there, if you don't mind teaching on concrete, we could probably pull it off. But no, seriously, it's not, it's not ready for that quite yet. It looks like tomorrow it'll be ready, but it really won't be. But that would be really nice. Placement is going to be a difficult issue. So as we were talking about this, as I was talking to some of my staff and Steve and so on, the easiest thing and maybe the only thing we can do is ask for volunteers. So what would have to happen is we'd have to have maybe 12 families-ish would have to say, yep, I'm ready to go for it. I'm ready to leave my, my son's class, have him leave and then join this new teacher. That's a lot to ask for, for parents, certainly. And not every parent would want to do that. But we'd probably have to go over volunteers. I mean, obviously we could talk about this. You could force families. That'd be a lot of fun. You know, call them up and say, oh, by the way, the teacher you've been with all year that you love, you're suddenly going to move to someone you may not know. So, you know, that's obviously placement would be an issue. And we have to be aware that some kids really shouldn't be moved at all, probably those that maybe have the most complexity and need to, you know, stay where they are. Hiring would be something that obviously would be, you know, done very, very soon. The process would start very soon. No guarantee we'd find two qualified individuals, but we would advertise in-house first. There are perhaps some staff members, non-classroom teachers that, that might, might qualify. We would look at that and obviously go outside the district as well. So a couple of tricky parts, as well as the other tricky things that I've mentioned. One is that we can't really get any additional kids. I mean, if triplets move in, that would be difficult. I don't see that happening. We generally don't get a lot of new kids during this time of year, especially in K and one. But I'm not sure homeschool families could come back at this point under this model. Private school parents and families really couldn't come back into this model. I'm not sure we can say no. That's an interesting question, but I think that would be a problem. But again, as I talk to teachers and their reservations about this, you know, are a few different things, but one in particular is that they're, you know, they're going to have a hard time saying goodbye to kids. I mean, how do you say goodbye to a kid? I realize the bonding has been different this year, but there's still a lot of bonding in an elementary, especially kindergarten, first grade class. So, so that's, that's significant. The upside of this is obvious. I probably don't even have to say it. It decreases the instruction quite a bit going into the summertime, you know, two and a half months or so. Limitates those home days, keeps things relatively normal for K and one. I should mention, remote learning will continue. Mrs. Pepper's class, Mrs. Post's class, those will not change. Those are going wonderfully and those families are in a good place for that as well. So that's, that's the overview. Obviously, we just, we want the board and the community to know we're, we're trying really hard to think about ways we can increase instruction. The whole year's been tricky, so this is just the next, the next tricky idea, I suppose. So I'm sure there's questions from, from the board.
Before we ask Bill questions, I just wondered, Steve, if you want to just touch on any of the items that Bill sort of kicked over around hiring and anything like that, that you want to throw in, then we can sort of have a, have a discussion about it.
Sure. And we do think it's, we're talking about April 1st to the end of the year, which we think we do have the funds based on the savings and based on all the wise decisions that the board made last year that we could support. Looking at, for two positions for about 12 weeks each. So we do think we have, we have the funds there. The, you know, we've just talked about K1 and, and what this would do, what we're looking for tonight. And as people, like I've never posted a position without, during the school year, and I go on the board for it. So I never thought, oh, Jim sees in the paper scheme, we're looking for two teachers, whatever. So what this is, is just a permission to plan and to advertise. It doesn't get codified. It doesn't happen until the board supports the nomination and that's when we trigger it. So, but we do look for the board's support for at least going to the next stage and can we pull it off? Can we, can we, can we find two high-quality teachers? Do we get the families who really believe so much that if we did, you know, and we hear it from the community that K1, full day, full-time from April 1st to the end of the year will make a difference. So we think, you know, if we can pull this off with high-quality teachers and somehow create some transition from, you know, the current teacher to the next and do that well, that the full day, all day for the rest of the school year, starting around April 1st, we think has great potential. And this is just trying to, can we, can we investigate? Can we inquire? Can we move to try? And we know that K1 has been tough on those home days and so can we do it? So, you know, Bill is a glass half-full, will try anything. He works, he respects his staff. They are positive and critical friends to make this work. I trust Bill and his team to whether or not this can be done with high quality, high expectations and high fulfillment. And if not, Bill will be honest and Steve, we tried, but we just can't do it. It wouldn't be better than what we've got right now. But we would like to give this a shot and continue to. And I know Andrea said it, Jim, and I say it, leadership, this adaptive management. We've never stopped trying. We've added 300 hours of intervention. We're full synchronous now as much as we can at the high school. Now we're looking at K1 going full, all day, every day. April 1st to the end of the year, you know, depending on all this stuff. So we've tried to be really responsive, proactive and try to think outside the box to increase as much in-person education as we can, right?
Bill, I have a quick question. First of all, this is great. Like I think a lot of parents are just smiling right now. You know, I think a lot of weight's off their shoulders. This is just great to hear. But the first thing I just want to ask you, do you foresee there being a bus in issue? You know, we're kind of having this, you know, spaced out on the bus. Do you see that being an issue with an impact of more students coming in for kindergarten and first?
It's potentially an issue. I could say right now, and I haven't done a recent check, but the numbers of kids being bused is really low right now. Not just because of safety reasons, I think convenience. You know, busing in this town for elementary kids has always been problematic because, you know, such a big town and sometimes their rides are an hour, often either down or back. So we would certainly check into that and get, you know, commitments from parents on whether you're taking the bus or not. But I don't think so, Norm, but I, I'm glad you mentioned that. That's being added to my list of interesting things to check out, certainly.
Great question. Thank you, Norm.
Yeah.
I'll dive on the location, location, location piece. So, can you talk about the space?
Sure. No, I'd be glad to. So right now, Meredith Post is teaching from home. She's one of the remote, she's a second and third grade remote teacher. We do have four interventionists using her room right now. We would, we would displace them. I have talked to them and they, we have a number of, they mainly work one-on-one, so they don't need a lot of space. A couple of them could use the computer lab, which we haven't been using a lot anyway because of COVID, honestly. So we might, you know, put them there. There's other sort of nooks and crannies. I mean, this is where the sacrifice comes in. We'd make sure they'd be in a well-ventilated place. That's something that we're, we're sure of now. The other, that would be for, probably first grade would go in there. The other spot would be Mrs. Pepper's room. And this is a little bit of a sad story because I've already displaced her once. Now, she's a remote teacher. She doesn't necessarily need, she doesn't really need the full space of her normal classroom. But, you know, her materials are there. She's, gosh, this must be, would be the third time. I think I've, I've moved her for different reasons. So I feel bad about that, but you know, we can, I mean, she could either do it from home or we can find a place. She really wanted to teach from school. You know, she didn't have the health, any health reasons not to be in the building. She just, you know, like me, she likes being around people. So we'll find a spot for her. So those are probably the, the two spots I'm thinking of, Rob.
Thank you, Bill.
Sure.
So I think what we're being asked, actually what we are being asked to think about it, is we're being asked if we can, if the board feels comfortable giving the sort of go-ahead to do next steps to put, you know, I think job descriptions out on the street and see where we get to. And so that this is really a temperature taking to see where the board's at on this proposal. I saw Norm gave a thumbs up. I don't know if anybody else has concerns or, you know, anything you want to air, if people are comfortable, we can give them the thumbs up to sort of proceed.
I think it's a great thing to try and pursue. If you can make it happen, all the better. So.
Thanks, Rob. Thanks, Norm.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I, you know, I think being able to bring more and more kids back is really what we've been trying to do all year. And so I appreciate, you know, that we're looking at, at different ideas. So I'm 100%. Yes, let's, let's do what we can to see if we can bring kids back.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm all in. I think it's, it's, it's great. I really appreciate, you know, Bill and Steve, you guys working on this. I guess my only question is, and it's probably, I don't know if you thought of this, but when do you do sort of the, the reach out to parents? Because you have the hiring, which is an important step, obviously, but then there's also, I mean, you need to have the kids in the classrooms in order to make it work. And so I'm just wondering where, when in the process do you, you need to do the outreach to parents to sort of see if you can fill the classrooms with, you know, willing volunteers, as you put it, to see if it all kind of works together?
I would say, I haven't thought exactly about that, but off the top of my head, I would say with the next couple of weeks, you know, March is the big month, if this is going to work. We may also need to look at, and this, I did not mention this to Steve, so this is making sausage live, as we like to say. I think if we're going to go down this road, those teachers would need, I think, a full day to get ready. If nothing else, well, not if nothing else, but one of the many things, just even moving desks in and things, things like that. So, you know, I, the flexibility needed in this is pretty the flexibility needed in this is pretty big. So I think we need to make sure teachers have the support they need.
And, you know, we'd build and come back, we'd start working on this and Bill would come back and, you know, obviously back on the 18th, two weeks from now, to see where we are. With a hope of an April 1, I don't know if that's a Monday, but you know, a Monday near April 1 is to to see where we're at. We won't give an update in two weeks at the 18th and see where we're at, but we'll begin planning. It sounds like, Bill, we've got at least the next step to to do the best we can and figure it out and see if it works, but it may not, but hey, everything's worth a try. So I appreciate you and your team.
You bet. Thank you.
Yeah, very much. Good luck. Fingers crossed. It's a it's a great idea.
Thanks.
So, Bill, we're gonna demote you, my friend. And stick around, you never know.
Have a good night, Bill. All right. So next is a conversation around spring sports.
Before we go, can I ask Steve something real quick? I just want to, I just want to stay on the same. So I fully support Andrea said at the beginning, you know, and I fully believe what we're doing now with six feet is appropriate for the school, but one thing, you know, I did mention to Steve in passing the other day was what the school district would look like at three feet. And the reason I'm asking, asking for this is because a lot of things can change in the next month. And I think it's very, you know, as a school member for me, who knows what's gonna happen in the next week? Things are changing with vaccinations and all that. And and just for me, to be able to see the data of what this district would look like, I'd be very interested in. And I'm not advocating for three feet. I make that very clear to this board. You know, in discussions with this community, I have clearly told them that it is not possible to get all our students in. And they've said, well, show me the proof. And I said, boy, I'm not, I'm not the guy who's in charge of the district. And I don't, I don't know what the step is to show them that, you know, through K, through K through 12, that, you know, the fifth grade would only have this many students in while you have a remainder of seven students, and then those seven students are left out based on space. How hard is it, Steve, to be able to to just show that data? Because who knows what's gonna happen week to week with, you know, the CDC or whatever changes? Is it a lot of work to say, hey, this is what it would look like in a snapshot based on a three feet? Again, I'm not advocating for it. I'm just collecting data as missing pieces, kind of.
I mean, it's some work because each, like, at the elementary, it's a little bit different. We have more uniform class sizes, but at the secondary level, we go from 13 to 24 and, you know, rooms change, but it can be done if if you're looking at how many classes could be all in with a three feet, if that's what Norm you're looking for. So, but, you know, some classes at the at the secondary level, as Rob's talked about, right, we have trapezoidal tables. So that really does limit, right? Because we don't, we really do don't like the single desk, you know, and we like the collaborative, but I mean, we can, we can look at it and we'll certainly dig in as much as you would like, but it's it's different levels of work and in some are barriers of furniture and really some are barriers of 24 kids, you know. But our job is to provide you with the information.
I also think, I mean, just thinking what you said, Steve, there's also, you know, there's the classroom space, but then there's all the other spaces within the school building. And so I, again, how I don't want to, I mean, I don't know if Steve can do that, but how you start to space out cafeteria spaces and lines space.
And buses, right?
Buses. I mean, so there's, it becomes, it becomes, it just becomes a larger puzzle to to put together. So.
I I'm not, I hope you guys understand what I'm just trying to think, you know, outside the box, you know. I mean, I know it's a lot of work. I'm gonna, you know, I'm just having a conversation, just, you know, something changes, we have information ready, already assessed that saying, you know, if we have seven students out of sixth grade, you know, and things change in April, you know, maybe we'll get outdoor classes for those individuals. So I, it was just something I was thinking about, because it may get to a point where how do we decide what kids are going in? If seven, if seven kids aren't able to go, if we decide to go at three feet. So the discussion for me was more or less just, you know, the discussions have had the community and just in general saying that it's just not possible that, you know, and to share with them saying that the puzzle's not that easy. So it was.
Yeah. Just, you know, having been in many of those rooms, I think the simplest way to do it is ask every classroom teacher, can you fit all of your kids? If you've got a class of 26, can you fit them all in here at three feet? I can tell you right now, there are certain rooms that I taught in that there's no way you can do it. But they could quantify that very easily. So, you know.
And I appreciate that. It's probably, Rob, I think you're right. It's probably the easiest way to do it is that the teachers know the kids in their classroom and they know their classroom.
Because there's, there's that moving target of, you know, you got a class of 17, but then you might have a class of 26. So, and that changes things dramatically.
And it just gives a snapshot, nothing.
We'll get it.
Okay, I appreciate. And again, I'm not advocating for it. I want to make it clear. I support what Andrea said, what we're doing as a board. Just future discussions, you know, if things change in our, in our world, whatever, you know, it's there. It is what it is. Thank you, guys.
All right. So next up on the agenda is the inter-scholastic sports and spring sports.
And Dan and Chris are available, but I, we can start out with just me, and if you have questions, we can bump them. Just deep appreciation and in respect to Dan and his team. We've had, and I'm successful, I'm not talking wins or wins or losses, successful or tournament successful, successful in, you know, maintaining healthy kids in a, in a, in a safe program as we've gone. You know, I think they're looking at, oh, you know, 12, 14, 15 games, whether it's middle school JV. So it was, we're in a very good place. So next, believe it or not, we're back in spring. We're almost at at spring. And so if we go back to the fall where we were, and it's very similar approach, it would be masks, it would be regional cohorts. If we do use the gym and inclement weather, it'd be very few number of kids. Most coaches like to be out full time once we start. We're talking limited start last week of March, full start first week in April. Part of that is weather that we can get everybody out. But we would, and tonight, it's, it gets codified by the nomination of the spring coaches. But it's a very similar model. And as Norm asked earlier, we can certainly provide a memo, but it is the, it is the screenings, it is the masks, it is the regional cohort. It is strong communication in our programs and we'd like to begin of the next stage of looking at spring. I can't believe that the spring is here.
Steve, can you just remind me what what are spring sports?
Sure. We're baseball, softball, lacrosse, spring track. And I think those, baseball, softball, spring track, boys, girls, lacrosse. If I missed anything, I'd be really embarrassed to say no.
So all outdoor sports. Perfect.
And and Dan wrote in to me, I hope I included if we, that's one of the reasons why we want to put it out. We don't want 20 kids in the gym. You know, 30, we don't want the entire track. So we'll put it off and very few will be in the gym, a little bit of, you know, they do want to do some arms work, right? You know, because it's been a long winter for throwing, it's just safe, but it'd be small kids. It's just a few in the gym. And just connected, as we come to the end of the season, and we are more in school, and I had a chance, I was over at the high school this week, and I saw the kids eating lunch in the gym and then spread out things. We would like to at least be able to, if the numbers, working with Amy, Dan, Chris and I, if the numbers are right in the next week or two, to support just two members of each family supporting the end of season awards in the gym, you know, we can spread the gym out like crazy, you know, for it. We'd just like to at least provide the opportunity, if the numbers are good, where Amy, Chris, Dan and I are, to allow two people to just enjoy the the award ceremony at the end of the season. If that's, if that works, we have the authority to do it if we think it's safe.
And Steve, you had mentioned that that would, it would be not all the sports would be on the same night. It would sort of be spread out, so it would be on multiple nights.
Yeah, that's what Dan's looking at, at least two, if not more nights. I don't want to commit him to nights, but we're talking about a basketball night or, you know, Nordic and ski night. And then if there's, you know, hockey usually do something with John Stark. But yeah, certainly spreading them out, that it wouldn't be two people for the entire program. And if Dan can design it, working with his coaches, make sure the coaches are comfortable too. And then having Amy and I and Chris and Dan just looking at numbers and see where we are, if we feel it's okay and safe to have a very, very social distance opportunity to honor and appreciate what all the coaches have done, what the teams have done.
Any thoughts on the board on that?
I wonder if we can, for those nights, I don't know if it's a specific night that the award ceremony usually falls on, but perhaps we could do it maybe on like a Friday night, so there's not school the next day, if we wanted to give like a weekend for cleaning, if that feels important. But I I assume that you'll be underneath the max number of, like, according to our our measures, the max number of people within the gym.
Yes, and we're gonna televise it, televising, that's the right word, but we're going to stream it, I think. See, I went back to the 50s or something. We're going to stream it. So because some people just uncomfortable, right? And some people who, you know, grandparents in Ohio are watching their kids play sports this year, which is really nice through this, to the screen. So the awards would be streamed if people outside of our little area want to watch or it's safe.
Maybe should add any objection to this proposal and moving it forward? All right.
In sports, you're okay. We're gonna nominate that and schedule be.
Yes.
Perfect.
And so next up is a permission to plan for the, for this, for the prom.
So I'm gonna bump up Chris. I'm gonna bump up Trish and Francine and maybe some others. They're gonna have to give me a sec. Promote. Ah, I hate when they bounce around. Ah, you know what they did? They raised their hand. They're messing with me, Mr. O'Brien.
You're doing a great job. You're you're promoting and demoting like a pro today.
And then and Trish, is that everybody? Chris, is that, I've got three up.
Yes, that's everybody. That's all you need to have up. And Francie's gonna share her screen. She's the one doing the presentation. Junior class president.
Well, thanks for joining us.
Absolutely. I'm gonna mute now. Francie, girl, you're up.
All right. Let me share.
Thanks for coming, Francie. I appreciate it. Nice to see you.
Oh, thank you for having me. Okay, is that working?
It sure is. Yep, there we go.
Okay. So basically, we just wanted, or we had some, we're trying to figure out prom and just reserve a venue and stuff. And so we just had questions and, or basically we wanted to get permission to like go ahead with it.
Francie, you'll want to go ahead and talk a little bit. I know I said, don't, don't read it all, but you'll want to talk a little.
What?
You'll want to talk a little bit. Tell them about what we had planned.
Oh, yeah. Um, so we, yes, we deserve this, but, um, the capacity is only 70 people, which is not enough for, or that would just be a really small prom. And we talked to them and they said they couldn't have an outside space because of just mud and they don't really have a place to have it. Um, which meant Pat's Peak is sort of off the table for us. But so we found the barn at Bull Meadow, which is also.
Francie, I don't know if we lost your audio because it looked like you were still talking, but we couldn't hear anything.
It has enough room for 180 people to have a sit-down dinner without COVID. So with COVID, that would be 110 people and we wouldn't be having a sit-down dinner. Meaning that with the New Hampshire guidelines, that's 250 people. We would keep it to 100 people who are masked inside. So we would be at less than half of the New Hampshire, like, half of the maximum people allowed by New Hampshire COVID guidelines, which would give a lot of space for every person and allow for a lot of social distancing. Um, it also has, as you can sort of see in the lower picture, a big patio that would also have a tent. So if it's raining or it's bad weather, we can still go outside onto the patio. And that would allow even more people to be out there and spread out. So we could sort of rotate people to through, so we wouldn't have to. So we could have more than 100 people come and still maintain the social distancing and keep a safe distance. And so our proposed date is June, Sunday, June 6, from 7 to 10. And we know it's a Sunday, but that is the only date that they have available that also works with our school schedule. And we think that most parents would be okay with that for this year, just because there's a lot going on. Um, so here's inside the barn. Um, as you can see, there's a huge, it's big, they're super high ceilings, like there's a lot of ventilation, a lot of space to spread out. Um, so we would have no tables.
Francie, I don't know if you can hear us, but I don't think we can hear you.
They have like little suites because it's for people who are getting married. It's for weddings. And those would be closed to promote even more social distancing and less clustering in small spaces. And we could have the windows open. That's another bonus. Um, so outside, there's, like I said before, there's a patio. So we could extend dancing and everything, dancing and talking and everything could extend out there. And it has three propane fire pits. So even if it was cold, that would still be okay because there'd be the tent and then the fire pits for bad weather. Um, and then there's also, as you can see on the lower left, there is this area, which would, it's a meadow. And then the little structure, which would be perfect.
If Francie cuts, cuts out, I can keep talking. Oh, so frustrating. We've talked about having games outside like cornhole, or, I mean, this is, these are not typical prom activities. Ladderball, maybe they could set up a croquet or something like that, but things that kids could do. I don't know if Francie can hear me. Francie, can you hear us?
I can.
Okay, you keep talking. Now I hear you.
Okay. Um, so food, drinks. So obviously, we would not have a sit-down dinner. Um, that's just, we would, that's, no. But so as you can see in the left picture, there's a little window to the far right, closest to the fence, and that's a serving window from inside. So we were thinking that we could serve little cheese and cracker boxes or individually wrapped desserts or soda and water could be served from inside to outside. So all eating would take and all eating and drinking would have to take place outside and would only be small, individually wrapped containers. And other than when you're actively eating, there'd be no removing your mask at all. So that would, sorry, that would help ensure more. So other than when you're eating, you'd have to wear a mask and eating would have to be outside and spread out. Um, and then once again, we have the games in the meadow, here in the other picture. Okay, so we have, here are the questions that we sort of have. So basically, would this be approved?
Is she still trying to pop?
No, I think she's looking for letting you read and let you answer. No, I think she's looking for letting you read and, and let you answer.
Chris, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Have you compared, um, what's been proposed here to kind of what other districts are doing for the prom, you know, kind of?
I'm going to toss that one to Chris because Chris has talked to people, but my understanding is there aren't a lot of districts considering proms.
So. Yeah, so in my, in my weekly, uh, principal meetings, um, it's a discussion that's just starting to fire up. Principals, there were about seven or eight schools that responded. There are a few schools that there's been no decision made, um, and they're struggling because of the size of their school. So like Portsmouth would have over 200 kids. So they're, they're trying to figure out if there's a venue that they could do something outdoors. Sanborn and Keane, there's still no decision there. Conval, you know, if you remember, uh, from this, from the fall, they have a ton of tents. So already, so they may do something right there, school outside. Uh, Pinkerton did cancel their senior prom, uh, but because of the size of their school, they do a, 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 two separate proms. One for the juniors, one for the seniors, but they did cancel the senior prom. That actually happened yesterday. Kirsage is looking to, uh, for an outdoor venue, um, like us, or like is being proposed tonight. No dinner would be supported there. Um, and they will look to have multiple dance floors. Uh, Hollis Brookline, uh, is looking at an outdoor venue. West High School just booked McIntyre Ski Area again, an outdoor venue. Um, and then next week we'll have another principals meeting and this will be one of the top topics on the agenda that we'll discuss. So I'll actually have, hopefully, more information. I did share, um, much of this information uh, with the principals group, um, with, with the amount of planning that's already gone into this, so that Francine and, and others have put into this. Um, we're quite a ways ahead of everybody else. So, um, you know, I'm proud of what the kids have done as far as taking a look at, you know, where can we do this? How can we do it safely, understanding that things would look different? Um, and, uh, the, there was a Friday event, just in full transparency. It was a Friday opportunity, uh, but that would have been Friday, the June 4th. Um, but on the, on Saturday, June 5th are our quarterfinals. Um, so we have the potential of, of any of our teams being in the quarterfinals. Um, so that, that wouldn't be great to do the prom the night before quarterfinals. Um, so, um, that's why we moved to a, a Sunday date and just ending it earlier that night, um, so people get home at a decent hour.
We are competing with all the people who had weddings put off. These are very similar venues and that we have an opportunity to have a venue that's a, a big indoor, outdoor venue is pretty remarkable. I, I think we're not, Pat's Peak wouldn't, wouldn't, wasn't able to do it. I think our, our plan B would be, you know, a tent at the high school or at Camp Methodeus or something.
Let's say, let's say you, um, you plan and something changes where this board would say no. Because, you know, we didn't like the plan, but we gave it up to you to plan. What is the financial risk? That these, and I know they, they really do a lot of fundraising. I know there's a lot of money, but what is the financial risk of them losing if something changed that this board didn't increase the plan?
So this class has raised about, um, I think $4,500. Their freshman and junior, or freshman and sophomore years. We haven't had, um, actually, we, no, that was the other class. Um, we haven't had any fundraisers this year. We're planning to do one in May. Um, and we have $1,500 encumbered at Pat's Peak and they're being incredibly gracious and giving it back to us. We actually sign, uh, when you sign up for a venue, you sign a non-refundable. So Pat's Peak has been incredibly gracious to give it back. This is a much less expensive venue because we don't need to pay for their food. They are not a food venue. They employ, you know, you can hire caterers with them and pay caterers. Um, so it would be losing whatever deposit we put down. We need to put a deposit down in the next five days. Um, and the, the venue is almost, it's between 1,800 and $2,300 and we would put half of that down. So it would be about a thousand dollar loss to this, to the class. And that's not school money. That's the money the kids have earned through selling hot dogs at homecoming and basketball games and selling wreaths or flowers or whatever.
What about the transportation piece in the last, I can't remember how many years kids have gone to the prom on buses and not in their own cars? Have you thought about that?
Chris and I have talked about that and, um, and the kids, and actually Francie and the kids on the prom committee and I talked. Um, we would do school buses if that's what Chris and the board want. Um, and, and we've toyed with the idea of allowing kids to drive. But I, I think Chris would prefer that we have buses, but they've said, we don't need the fancy coach buses to go from Hopkinton High School to Bog Road and it's right near Fisherville. It's like two minutes from Chris's house. Chris likes this venue because he can be home by 10:15.
Be more like 10:30.
So it's so much experience. You, that's experience talking right there.
Exactly.
I mean, we, we throw out the buses. One of the things I thought of afterwards, and I actually was brought up tonight i- i- in regards to Bill's proposal is, you know, the spacing on the buses. Um, so I, you know, again, we, I think what I said to Trish, I said that to me, figuring out transportation, I think comes, it comes a little bit later down the line. Let's see. Let's, let's take the temperature of the board, let Francine go through her presentation, answer any questions that they have. And then that becomes part of our planning process. If the, if the board, uh, doesn't want us to entertain the buses and have the kids drive themselves, then, then that's what we'll discuss. What I'm looking, what I'm really looking to do is, and I'm hope, I'm hoping that because of vaccinations coming out, um, to, to give the students an opportunity to do something that is school-like, that we just haven't been able to do since March 13th last year.
I'm not even trying to ask the question.
Sorry, Rob, go ahead.
But that's okay. If this weren't a school event, uh, and we, we were just talking about meeting the directives from the state of New Hampshire for a restaurant or any other public place, would we be meeting them with that number of people going?
We'd be meeting them by, um, we're, we're proposing half what this venue could. This venue currently would do, if it was a standing room, so no sit down dinner. They would be allowed to have 250 people inside in this event. No food served. We're talking 100 people and then trying to keep 50 people outside. So making sure that we have kids in both spaces.
How about the, um, and this is the question, because I know the, the, the dancing piece. Like how, because you know, how do you do the separation, six feet allow for dancing, but then ensure, you know, as, as chaperones or as students that you are dancing with your date and not someone else's date?
So I have two, um, two ideas. One is, I would very much like the kids to consider hiring a DJ who will teach line dancing and try to teach them the Macarena and Cotton Eye Joe and all of those things that would let kids dance in lines, um, more than in couples. Um, I guess the, the, not cynic, but the realist in me knows that these kids, if they're dating or going to prom, they're in each other's bubbles. I, I see their Instagrams. These kids are. Um, Amy Cook, our school nurse, said that for, that for a reasonable price, we could probably buy 300 COVID tests and we could test ourselves on Thursday, ask the kids to quarantine until Sunday, test them again Sunday and go into it with a pretty high degree of confidence, even though that they'll still all wear masks and we try to keep distance, but we could go in with pretty high degree of confidence that they, um, that we don't have anyone with the, with the virus. And we're willing to do that. Um, Francie, you can chime in, but I'm pretty sure the kids would, to have a prom, they would, they would do this. They would do what we ask of them.
I, I really, I appreciate this presentation. I think the other sticking point for me or thing that I'm looking at is the protocol for guests from outside the district because with other things, that's, um, been a sticking point for us as well, like with, with sports and whatnot. Um, so how, I mean, does that, how does that factor in, I guess, is the question.
Chris, do you want to weigh in? I'm, I'm pretty sure the kids would love to be able to invite a date from outside of the district. Um, but I think that they also recognize that this may have to be, uh, only Hopkinton kids. Chris, do you, I'll let you jump into.
Well, and from what I understand right now, um, I think we're Brady, Bishop Brady and Hopkinton were the only two schools that were talking about uh, whether or not to allow guests. Every, every other school in full transparency that, you know, I've mentioned tonight, and we'll hear more next week. Uh, we're saying no guests. Um, but as we continue to talk about that, that's where the idea of the test were, were coming up. Um, and you know, and there are other questions, right? I mean, we're allowing, you know, we allow, you know, hockey players and basketball players to run up and down the court and bump into one another, no masks. You know, here we're going, you know, here they would continue to, to, to wear masks. Um, and I, and I think the, the prom committee is doing everything they can to kind of embrace that with the theme that they're trying to work with, with, which is more of a masquerade kind of ball, uh, theme. But, but again, I mean, if, if we need to purchase tests, then we'll purchase tests and test our students. If we can only do our students, then we can only do our students. Um, I think our students are being, um, I also understand that if they, if they get a prom and they're, but there are things that we have to go without. We have a prom though, you know, and, um, and, and we'll move that forward. And that would, you know, and, and if we need to limit the number of tickets, then we'll limit the number of tickets. Um, usually we will sell out anywhere between 140 to 150 tickets, um, to a prom. But if we need to limit that, then we'll limit that. I think, I think, I think we typically always sell out.
Chris, is it? And I'm, I'm, I'm going to share my age here, but is it usually the junior or the seniors prom?
The, the junior class puts the prom together. So it's the junior prom, but seniors go to the prom.
And it's just, just juniors and seniors allowed, or could the junior invite something?
If a junior or senior was to invite an underclassman, we have, we've had freshmen and sophomores go to the prom.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
What's, um, and I don't remember from the school calendar, like what's, when's, what's the last day of school currently scheduled in June? And I guess, and I know it's different for seniors as well, just curious.
Well, the, it was the 18th because that's the night of graduation. Um, but we've had, we've one or two snow days now. I can't remember. So we're going. Yeah, two. So we're going in the Monday and Tuesday after the 18th.
Seniors would have their finals on the 13th, right, Chris? 13th, 14th of June? And then their graduation rehearsals and things that week.
Yeah, it's all that week.
Do you guys have a sense of how many people would be willing to attend? Has there been any kind of survey taken, um, as far as how many? I know you've said in the past, it's one for you to 158 tickets sold. Um, I just didn't know if that seemed to be tracking this year, if it would be less.
So Juliet, Mia, or Francie can chime in, but my, um, sense from my senior elective is that they would be thrilled to come. And my sense from how close they are in the halls is that they don't care about how close they need to be. Um, you know, that there's not going to be a concern on their part. I don't know about their parents. Any of you students want to jump in?
Everybody I've talked to has been super enthusiastic about it, even with restrictions. Yeah, same with me. I think people are just excited that there's going to be something. Or not that there's going to be, but that, at the, like that.
That there could be, sweetheart.
No, you did great. You did great.
If there's seemingly a lot of folks who want to go, if the, I mean, how would you deal with limited tickets then? I mean, would it be a senior first thing? Would it be a? Who's gets, who gets to say no to kids who want to go, but we only have 100 tickets?
That's a great question. Chris, do you have an idea? I'm sort of thinking first come, first served, like you put them on sale, but I don't know how Chris feels.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think you'd, you'd probably have to do it as a first come, first served. It's the, you know, you're, it's typically as a junior class, but we lost a prom last year. Um, so the seniors last year were not able to attend a prom. Um, unless they were as a freshman sophomore invited to go.
I think you'd like to make sure all the juniors and seniors can go before you expand it to a freshman and sophomore. They're going to have more opportunities to go, if that means someone doesn't have a, you know, the, the perfect date that night. We can talk more about that, but this is the juniors and, you know, seniors' last shots.
And I kind of feel like we could maybe, um, the prom committee and the seniors are the first to buy. And then after that, you open it to the juniors. I don't know. I think we certainly could develop protocol with the kids and with Mr. Kelly and Ms. Gagnon and decide what needs to happen. We, we will certainly try to make it fairest to those who would never have it, who won't have another chance to go to prom.
Can you, Francie, can you go back to the slide that's got the, uh, the dimensions of the place and all that, those parameters on it?
This one?
Yeah, that's the one. Thank you.
The, the barn is 60 by 60 and the, and it's a full two and a half stories high in the middle part of it. If you look at the bottom picture on what Francie's showing, half of the patio gets covered by a 30 by 30 tent. We would not put the sides on it because once you put the sides on, it's, it's counted as indoor space. Um, but we would just have it in case it was drizzly or cold. And then the other half of that patio is where they set up the propane tank, uh, propane heaters. And then there's a lot of grounds the kids can wander. They can bring an umbrella and a raincoat. I'm going to tell them wear flip flops, not high heels.
Um, what was the reasoning behind choosing 100 people, um, for the inside spaces? Were the NH COVID guidelines, is that less than six feet and is 100 at six feet?
Francie and Mrs. Sable and I, when we were there, just thought, if they can stand up um, 250 people, if we made it less than half of that, we would have a better chance of, of being able to do it. And honestly, with 150 people, I'd feel personally, as one of the chaperones in charge, I'd feel better with 50 of them outside and 100 of them in. I'd like to keep a third of the kids out and I'd like to keep everybody moving all night long, sort of taking turns, be in, be out. Francie, did I capture us right?
Yes, I think just, just making it even safer.
What would be the feeling from the class if, I'm just talking out loud here, if the school board said, we limit to just Hopkinton?
Any of you kids want to weigh in?
I mean, I think people would accept it. I mean, obviously, I think we'd all prefer to be able to ask people from outside. I don't know how many people actually would, but people who are dating from outside the school and stuff. But I think people would be willing to accept it.
Yeah, I would understand it. Um, I don't know how different it is to bring an outside guest than it is like with what's been going on with sports, but I understand like capacity is tough. So I think people would get it.
Could you do something like, um, if, if the maximum capacity isn't filled, then people can, but up until that point, it's just, um, Hopkinton? Or is it more of an issue of actually having people from outside?
Norm, you asked a question, so I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying, it's a good question. You know, I think, you know, one of the concerns is, you know, from various communities, you know, what we're controlling, you know, within our schools, you know, we've, um, you know, I think you bring up a good point that these, if these individuals are seeing each other outside of school, they already have that interaction. So I'm, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm trying to throw some things out there, the, to kind of, to kind of think outside, but I'm really happy to hear that you guys are open to alternative possibilities. I'm not sure if I answered your question, but I, I understand what you're asking. I just can't put the right words right now.
For me, Norm, it's, um, it's the issue of, we've been pretty, we've been pretty controlled in Hopkinton about what we do and don't allow our kids to do in our school. And I just, I know our kids and I know, I know who I can say what to. I know who to expect certain behavior from and I know who has been safe, you know, and I, so for me. Who has been safe, you know, and I, so for me, that's the, the benefit of knowing who's in that barn with. With me and these other adults is that I know our kids. Chris and Rebecca know our kids.
Thank you.
To that point, Trish, how, so how many chaperones are there? Cause so we'll have, you know, potentially a hundred, a hundred and fifty kids, but then an additional, how many adults?
So I, I envision, we need to have a police officer always. Chris, you can weigh into. I envision making sure that there's a couple of people outside. That there's a person always at the door, making sure that what's inside and what's outside is sort of evenly. Distributed or the two thirds, one third distributed, and then probably four. Or five people inside to make sure that we're swinging through the bathrooms and making sure there's some space. So I would think. Eight, Chris, would you think? Eight or ten people, ten adults for that? Ten max?
Yeah, and, and we may want a few more. You know, simply because, you know, there's a little bit more policing that we have to do, as Trish just described. You know, because usually, you know, I'll, and, you know, Ms. Gagnon is there as well. I mean, we also then patrol the grounds, if you will, you know, take a water. But, yeah, I mean, if we need more people, we'll get more people. And, and knowing the staff, I mean, I, I think the staff would step up to support it, because, you know, they're there for the kids.
Um, really quickly, I have to go on a full minute, so I just want to make a few comments. Firstly, it seems as though. I had originally thought that there would only be a hundred people able to go, but. I'm seeing it as a hundred fifty people would be allowed, just fifty outside and a hundred inside. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, then that seems pretty similar to the normal amount of people that would go, which makes capacity seem like less of an issue. And then also in terms of people from other schools, I'm guessing that if anyone is dating someone from another school, they're going to be seeing each other anyways. And also we are allowing indoor sports, which is people. Within six feet of one another, more than just two people within six feet of one another. And they probably don't see each other on a regular basis as it, so I just, I don't know.
Good point. And we are asking our student athletes to quarantine, and so there is. So there is a little bit of a difference. I, I, I understand the point. So this is a little different.
Guess for me, I'm not opposed, but I've learned in the last year that. Oftentimes prefer a little time to think. And I really wish that you had to put your deposit down two weeks' time after our next board meeting and we could make a decision then. I'm just really uncomfortable saying. Yes, and then, you know, I get, yeah, I'm, I'm just. Like a little time to process.
I can certainly speak to the owner of the barn, and we can. We can see they, she does have, you know, I mean, dates are going quickly with them, obviously.
And I'm, I'm just sort of where Rob is, like I, I want to get to yes, and I, I, I think the plan that you laid out. Is good, and it's a good, I think it's a good starting point for us.
So can, so can I broker this, Jim? I don't mean to cut you off.
Please cut me off.
If, if Trish goes ahead and calls her contact at the barn. You know, this, 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 simply, you know, we're taking the similar approach to like an overnight trip. You know, we get the permission to plan and then we come back and get final permission. So i- if, if Trish is successful with her contacts and, and just letting her know that we'll have, you know. We're, we're still moving forward with our planning. The board would like some more time to consider the proposal. And you give us more time to plan, because that's what we're asking for here is planning. And, and, and help us with where, that if it was to happen, if we were to move forward. Are you comfortable with outside guests or not? And, you know, and, and give us some direction on some of the questions that. The prom committee has put together for the board for consideration. We can work on that over the next two weeks and then come back. At the end of this month and, and have a follow up.
You just have to check out the deposit. Will the barn give us an extension to two weeks for the deposit?
I can ask if they will give us that extension and if they won't. I personally, boy. I'm, I'm then between two things. One is that we put down the deposit and we lose it if, if we say no. And the other option is that we hope the date doesn't fill. And we go ahead in two weeks after your next meeting and hope that that date has not filled. Who knows? Maybe we'll have the first Wednesday night prom in history.
We've had some funky dates before, Trish, just, so it is, it's a funky thing.
It wouldn't be all that different than in a way game up in Berlin.
Right.
Or a Sunday night prom, honestly, although, you know, but. So I, I can talk to Chris and see, and then the prom committee and see. Would it be better to put our deposit and hope and maybe lose it or, or just put them off and say, we won't know for two weeks. And we'll get back to you on, when's your next meeting?
The eighteenth.
You know, I'll be in touch with you on the eighteenth of March and hope that that date hasn't been taken.
Nineteenth, just so you know, nineteenth.
Okay, yep. And the, the kids and, and Chris and I can make that decision, which route we go, whether we risk the money or if we just go. But if you need the time to think, then I would, I would prefer that you have thought it all out. Because honestly, more heads are better. You may think of something that we haven't come up with that, that, that is an issue or is a great thing. Francie, we should make sure that you share this recording with Mr. Chamberlain so that the board can have access to it. So that you can review any, and, and have any questions.
Chase, you just read my mind. That was exactly what I was gonna ask for, because this is helpful to be able to look through it.
Absolutely.
Again.
And we'll put the, we'll put the website of the barn on it, because there are even more pictures and you can see how incredibly, I mean, it's huge. It really is a large space.
Can we go to the, the, the last page of the presentation again and just make sure that there are no other questions on there that we have to do further work on? As far as the board is looking for more information. So we're still on the planning stage as far as the first bullet. You know, if we could get some guidance around whether or not guests from outside the district is something the board is either comfortable or not with. That would help us moving forward.
I would be a lot more, sorry, Jim.
No, no, please, Rob, go.
I would be a lot more comfortable if it was kids within. The school. I think, you know, Trish's point about knowing the kids is really important, and that's not necessarily true if we're outside of the school. And so, and, and oftentimes, some, well, I shouldn't tell, sometimes those dates are, are older as well.
I mean, I'm generally more comfortable with, with it, to sort of the Rob's point to being in town and, and not. Expanding outward. And, and it's hard to control, like if, if it's a student from, you know, Webster. You know, versus a student from, you know, man, I think it's hard to then start drawing boundaries, so it feels to me like just keeping it in the school feels like a. Better alternative.
And yes, I guess the only question is, is like, they're already seeing each other. Outside the district. How is it any different that they're gonna be seeing each other in, at the prom?
Well, because there's a hundred and forty-nine other students there.
So if they're infected from there, I'm, no, I'm just, just trying to wrap my head around both you and Rob, okay?
And then, what about tests in regards to temperature checks, questionnaires for the, for the graduation, just for a reminder. What we did there, we had the questionnaire in the morning that the students and the families filled out prior to attending. Is that something the board would want us to do again? It's, you know, we're, we've already done the form, but the form's easy, we just have to update it. And if that's something the, the board would like us to do, I'm sure we could dig that form back up.
Yeah, I feel like we have a, a pretty good protocol for, you know, even for our sporting events, for, you know, temperature checks and, and. And the questionnaire, those feel appropriate and, and we already have some of those systems in place, or at least I think we're used to doing those. And so that feels like something we should do. It's, it's a school event. I'm not so sure about the COVID test. That feels like a little. Above and beyond, but again, that's just me. I don't know how others feel.
Actually, I like the idea of, of having PCR tests. I don't know what the costs involve. I know Trish, you mentioned that. It would be maybe not terribly, terribly expensive, but I think if we're gonna entertain having. A hundred and sixty people in one, you know, inside and outside in one location. I, yeah, I don't know, dancing, I don't know. For, for me, I think the PCR test would, would. Be an additional measure. I mean, it's, it's screening, so it's, it's an additional COVID nineteen protection measure. If we're probably in this case not gonna necessarily have six feet of, of space between kids.
Amy Cook, that, that was her first suggestion to me when I talked to her about this, was that she felt pretty strongly that if we. Tested Thursday, ask kids to quarantine between Thursday and Sunday, so that would mean. Remote classes Thursday and Friday for anybody going to prom, and then, then, you know, test them again on Sunday. That we'd have a, a bit more clarity about, about who we have, and I mean, it's the, the. The reception for Judge Amy Coman Barrett at the White House is an example of everyone was tested and it still became an event. However. It does give just a little bit, one more level of security. And she didn't think it was terribly expensive at this point to purchase that many tic, that many tests.
That may be, not to revisit, but see, this is why I like to think, but. That may be the way to, to reconsider outside guests is if they are COVID tested. I mean, there are colleges and universities that are testing kids twice a week and that's keeping them rolling. So if you're from outside the district and you get a test on Thursday and on Sunday and you're negative. Thinking out loud.
All right, we'll make sure that this is available to all of you. Francie, we'll add the, the website of the barn so they could take a look too.
So, so yes on tests?
Yeah, let's get a price for it and, and, and see what it is, and we'll keep planning this week.
Great.
Well, thank you, Francie, for the presentation and for, for really working and thinking through this. This is, this is great. It's hard, so I, I know how hard it is, so we really appreciate it. And it would be great to be able to put something together for the junior and senior class, so. It's encouraging, but keep working at it.
You, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And so it sounds like, just to conclude, so you guys are gonna continue to plan, work with the venue, and then we'll have this on the agenda. Again in two weeks, and so we'll welcome you back and, and kind of continue the conversation and see what you learn. And then Rob can think over the next two weeks and we'll see, we'll, we'll see how far we can get, but really appreciate it.
Great, thanks so much, and I look forward to being demoted.
I'm gonna demote you, right? There you go, I'm demoting you as we speak. And then. And Mr. Kelly, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Hope I didn't over, over, hopefully I didn't over demote.
No, I think you did a good. It's so hard. I mean, kudos to them for, for all the thought that went into the planning, but. You know, how hard is it to put together a prom in the pandemic, so. It's pretty amazing times. So Steve, the decision maker, matrix.
And, and you already did a quick review, yeah, we, the numbers eighteen point three on the average, seven day average cases. Which puts us at accelerated spread. We also are doing some CDC work too with the, with the matrix, because we have some. ADA issues that we're using CDC, so we're, we're tracking all that, but yes, we still have, we're still at accelerated spread.
And Steve, that's based on Merrimack County, right?
Yep, you got.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything else on, on operating and learning in a pandemic? That was a lot. And so any other thoughts or, or questions or concerns before we move on? All right, so we'll move on to our next big event coming up, which is an annual meeting. That we're scheduled to put on, so. Steve, I'm gonna, I think I hand it over to you for materials and, and anything on information sessions.
Very quickly, thank you to Andrea, who, and, and everybody who collaborated on the mailing, which is going out, if not. Probably out today, right, Andrea? It'll be arriving.
I, I, I verified that it was in, put in the post yesterday, so it should be hitting mailboxes today and tomorrow.
And, and so this is our last meeting before the first session, which will be a week from Saturday. Right, which will be the thirteenth, and it'll nine o'clock, and we have some planning meetings, just making sure and we'll work on the. The pledge allegiance and the, and the protocol, all that piece, and then we head to the Wednesday, which will be information session two. And then Thursday is our last, that would be Seth's last board meeting and the last meeting of this board. And then we move to the twentieth, which will be the all day vote. Michelle's already assured of a beautiful day, because we bought a box of hand warmers and toe warmers. The biggest box we could, we could purchase, which means it's gonna be eighty degrees and sunny, so thank you, Michelle, good job in assuring of that. Anything else that, if you need, any idea, anything to make, you know, or, or, I talked to Dulcey today. About getting the, the band back together, so to speak, and, and start that planning for the twentieth, so. This is really just to make sure if there's anything you think we need to make those days and those times go smooth, please let us know, and I think I did put the, a mailing in the packet. So I think you've all seen it with the dates, and we're firing up.
Steve, my only, and, and maybe James mentioned this, and just, I don't remember, so I know, so on Saturday we'll give our, our. Do, go over the warrant, do public comment on that, people can ask questions. And then we have emails and other ways to communicate to us, and then on Wednesday we'll get together and. James, is, is James, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of information. We assume there may be a lot of information shared. James, James is gonna consolidate that for us and sort of present it or help us walk through that. Is that true? Okay.
Yeah, and we're meeting, we're gonna, we're meeting with James, I think, next Tuesday. And, and we'll, we will go through everything, we'll make sure we're all on the same page, anything he needs, make sure all the emails are up and boards and all that fun stuff, but. Yeah, that's the work and, and, as you said, public comment Saturday, public comment during the public comment period. And then Wednesday really is a work session for the board to assimilate the public comments, and if there are any amendments to the, to the article. And then Thursday, and right, we developed the, the actual ballot with James and with, with, with the group, and then. Make sure there's a lot of copies ready for the vote, because this year the ballots have to be filled out at the site.
Thank you, that's perfect.
Everybody okay?
The one other piece that we can add is that we did, Matt Stone did put up the hopkinschools.org slash school meetings. So all of this information is already posted online, the, the Zoom link is there, the YouTube links are there, everything is up. I mean, you can't join the meeting, because it's not happening yet, but you can read through everything on, on the website as well.
Nice. Thank you to Matt. All right. I just lost my place, I apologize. So next up is the building, rate the building committee update, and so. I'm gonna hand it over to Norm to talk about the meeting of March second, and then we have some decisions to make.
Yeah, I'm just bumping up Jay. Hopefully I nailed him. Hopefully I go, look at that. So Jay, thanks for joining us.
So, I'll say it over and over again to the town of Hopkinton, thanks for allowing us to have this project, you know, it's been a great. Year in this product, in this progress, and thank you to this board for implementing it. You know, I must say. It has been a great, 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 great year, where we're starting to see a lot of work done at Harold Murn in all our schools and for it to continue to improve. One of the most important things before we discuss adults was to ensure that we kept the promise to the taxpayers. That everything that was in the bond was completed, and so Steve, Michelle, and Jay and I, we had a meeting and we went through. And we had a discussion about making sure that the promise that was committed to this, to this town was fulfilled. Because you don't have a discussion on adults until you know that we did this and we achieved the, the goal of what was promised in the bond. And I'm pleased to say that we did. It was, it was a great progress to make sure that we did that, and we continue to move forward. With additional resources for this project, project. So. A lot of work went into the first part, which was phase one. We got fire suppression. We were very fortunate to be able to get a grant from the, from the state, and that was the first thing that this board agreed to. As part of the project, as an adult, two hundred and nine thousand dollars. Now, uh, we move ver, um, towards a very important part, which is, um, the second phase of adults for the facility project. And as you know, um, at this time, the building committee had some time to be able to look at the additional resources from this project and determine what was best, um, for the district, which helps alleviate pressure on the CIP, add on additional things for the district that maybe we won't, we wouldn't be able to do, and it just continues to improve and it continues to grow. But as you know, a lot of people put a lot of time and effort into this. You know, I, I, you know, from, from Dave Luna to Liz Durant, Jim, to you, Jim, to this board seeing it through. Um, there's, there's three people here on the screen who did a lot of work, you know, from Michelle to Steve to Jay Burgess. And I asked, I asked Jay to come to the meeting tonight because, you know, he, he was the captain of this in the beginning. And for him to see this come into fruition for me is so important because for us to have an, an opportunity to have four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars of additional resources to put into this project, to trust our, our leadership team to look at what's best for the district. Um, I had to bring the man himself here to kind of get, give you guys a little bit of a thought process and rundown of what we have uh, moving forward in this phase two that the building committee recommended. I'll turn it over to you, Jay.
Thanks, Norm, I appreciate it, thanks for the kind words. It's, um, again, it's really been a team effort all the way through, so I just happen to be the one that has been fairly visible on this, but we, we need to keep in mind the the dozens of people that were involved in the original plan, and then the, the people that have participated on, particularly the people that are part of our current team, the construction manager, our owner's project representative, and, um, our, our, uh, construction manager and architect firm. So we've really got a good group. Speaking to the project, um, and, and I'm gonna kind of cover some ground here, right? Some of the stuff I had mentioned to, to Norman and Rob earlier, but what would have been probably best for Jay and the facility steering committee originally would be to have this project come in seventy-five cents less than what we had projected. That would have been great for our ego, we would, we would have just, just been, we were almost there but still under budget. But for a number of reasons, we've come in quite a bit less than that. Um, the, as we work through and, and, and double check and make sure we've, we've addressed pretty much everything that we had promised. Uh, we have the, the balance currently at about a little over four hundred thousand dollars, I think it's four hundred and forty thousand dollars. And that's really a result of three things. Um, the, the first one is we've been lucky, and I guess to some extent, if you can call doing a building project during a, uh, the worldwide pandemic lucky, I'll take it, because we've seen some, not only did we not see the escalation in costs that we had anticipated, we saw some, some really super pricing. Um, if you take a couple steps back with me, a lot of this work we, we priced in, um, May and June, when, um, a lot of the construction in Boston had been suspended, they, they closed for, uh, I, from the middle of March until June, so uh, a lot of the, the construction activity that was driving a, a super hot construction market evaporated almost immediately. Uh, when you look at year-on-year, um, uh, construction in Boston, it's down twenty-five percent. So that really caused us to see some very, very good pricing. Um, for example, there's a, just at the middle high school, the mechanical work, the heating, ventilation, air conditioning and plumbing, uh, two very good contractors, both of whom I've got firsthand experience with my, with my work at the city. We saw a savings of sixty thousand dollars on, on just one bid, and that, that was one of many bids. So we, we really, we got some excellent type, uh, pricing on that, even the steelwork, which I was concerned about, we couldn't even price steelwork, was down less ten percent less than we had anticipated, so, uh, we had, we had some very good pricing there. Uh, also, uh, we didn't find much, um, contingency. There were, we, we built a big contingency in because we didn't know what we were gonna find. We didn't find much, uh, we knew that we would find asbestos, the question how much we had to address was, was, was up there, but uh, we found very few, uh, contingency items. Um, and probably the biggest thing as far as, as that scheduling goes is we also, uh, we did a lot of work while the students were out, which was not something we had anticipated, but we really leveraged it to our advantage, so. Um, when you roll in that and the, the fact that of the grant opportunities, we, I think to date, we've seen over a hundred thousand dollars in grants. Uh, we had sprinkle system as, as Norm had mentioned, we had some, um, some money that went towards some of the year handling Harold Martin. So that shaved, uh, over a hundred thousand dollars off of the project. But I, I would say probably most importantly, we built an excellent team, um, from the ground up, uh, when, when we engaged our architecture firm. Uh, we had, uh, some really good luck with the Turner Group, Doug Proctor, who's our project architect, um, immediately found a way to reconfigure the addition of Harold Martin that, um, that allowed us to actually get that fourth classroom and without any, um, without any lost cost. So, uh, we won't say it didn't cost anymore, but we, we were able to get four classrooms in for the price of four classrooms, which was great. Uh, and we've really got a good working relationship with our team, everybody kind of pulls together and they find, you know, good innovative solutions uh, that saved us money. Um, I think the, probably the biggest example of that is the sprinkler system. The, uh, we challenge to be able to pull the pieces and the, the planning and the budgeting, and Michelle gets a lot of credit for this because I think a lot of this stuff happened at the, I won't say the eleventh hour, I think it was the eleventh hour and forty-five minutes, but it all was done and we'll receive that grant. So I, I think that's really huge, and, um, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't shout out to a couple of members in the community, uh, Ken Rubenstein and, uh, Renell Warrior also really helped a lot. Uh, good, solid community members that have allowed us to, to, to get this project in a place where now we can have the discussion, which I think we've all been looking forward to, is what additional work can we get done? So, um, I don't, uh, I don't know what point I turn it back to Norm, but I'll run for another second or two here. Uh, I believe you see in, um, in your packets, there is a, a multi-colored list which goes school by school and shows the items that, uh, we've discussed. I don't know.
Share the screen?
Yeah, I, I don't have that norm, uh, quickly shareable, but, um, so this shows the, uh, the, the different, um, items we have, uh, items in green, we'll call phase one, those are the ones that have already been embarked on. Uh, phase two are in yellow, and, uh, that's the, what we are recommending tonight. And phase three, um, there is just a brief bit of explanation. Uh, because the project is not complete, we're not nearly, we're, we're, I would say we're well past halfway, but we still have a ways to go. Um, we are still holding contingency money back. Uh, we don't know what we may find as we get into the, the demolition of the high school, um, science labs. There are still things that can come up, so, uh, in order to, to, to make sure we remain on, on budget, uh, we are going to keep contingency back probably until to July. At that point, we will probably have a similar discussion about how we, um, we allocate whatever funding may remain for what we will call phase three. Um, I, I would suspect at that point, we'll present another set of recommendations that we can discuss, but the, this is probably tonight is probably the meatiest part of it. These will be the projects that we really need to embark on now in order to make sure that we can be complete by the end of the, the project in September. So, um, as you'll see, and I won't go through them all, but, uh, um, it was, uh, we, we had the balance, we went through the list of priorities, and you'll see, uh, um, uh, what I think is a fine mix of, uh, deferred maintenance, it's, uh, mostly deferred maintenance, but there's also some, uh, important programming things there to address some of the needs that the educators on the committee have brought up. Uh, specifically the computer lab renovation and the, the work at the, um, at the, at the middle high school and the music room. Both of those are, uh, are, I think, kind of exciting for the people that are, that are in the building. Um, but keeping in mind that we're addressing, you know, some pretty serious deferred maintenance issues. Uh, if we go way back to the, the original project, the thirty million dollar project, we had, uh, over six million dollars in deferred maintenance identified to be addressed as part of that project. And in this project, as it stands now, we've touched probably, uh, a little more than a third of that. So we've done about two million dollars in deferred maintenance, two point three million dollars, I believe. So, um, there's plenty more out there. Uh, my feeling, and I think it's shared by, by members of the, of the building committee, is that if we address deferred maintenance where we can, it'll take pressure off the CIP going forward. So we'll revisit all these conversations again in a couple of months when I think everybody would be a little bit more comfortable looking at releasing some of that contingency money. So, um, that was pretty much everything I had to say, uh, I'm certainly happy to answer any specific questions. And, um, I'll, I'll throw it back to Norm in case I missed something.
No, Jay, that's why I had you come tonight, that was great, thank you very much. Um, just, just so the board knows, we have about, it, right now in contingency is about two hundred thousand dollars. So, um, you know, a lot can be, a lot can be released hopefully in July, and then, as Jay said, we would come back um, in July and we discuss phase three. So we, in all the stages of this progress, product, product, project, we have come back to the board for approval for each specific phase. Um, with that, you know, the building committee made this recommendation, um, and I'm very happy with how it was vetted. And mostly importantly for me was Steve's leadership team knew, knew, knew what they need for their, for their, um, for each building, and so with that, this addresses a lot of areas in each school, which I think is very appropriate for us to move forward with. Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, no, don't thank me, thank you guys, this is, um, a ton of work, um, over such a long period of time, I'm looking at Jay, who's, who's been living this, um, and volunteering and helping us grind through this for years, so Jay, thank you so much, um, this is quite an accomplishment, I really appreciate it.
It is an action item tonight, just to make sure everybody's okay, um, uh, to, to, and then we'll start the ordering, it's now because the order and get everything ready for summer install.
Any, any questions, um, from the board, any of the items, or Andrew?
I just, for many of them, or me, um, I just had a quick question, um, about the, the Maple Street School Computer Lab renovation. That seems great.
It's, it's going to, um, enlarge in about six feet, move the wall about six feet, redo casework. Um, redo, it's, it's a, it's a very funky space now, egress is a, a very difficult, it's a real challenge, egress when that current space is filled with kids. Um, it's gonna change the, the, in the vernacular, the teaching wall is going to change and, and the flexible spacing will add it. So, um, I know Karen Locke and, and, and Amy are really excited about that piece.
No, I agree, that was just one that caught my eye that I thought was a, a particularly great ad.
Um, so for the board, any, um, any hesitation on the action item, does everybody feel comfortable with it? And with, with this list of, of, um, additions? Perfect.
Um, thank you, Jay.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
My pleasure, we've got, we've got it this far, we, we look forward to, uh, having a similar presentation in July and, uh, put a big bow on it.
Nice, and, and you guys are still confident that, um, that come end of August, we're gonna be, we're gonna be completing and being in good shape?
Yeah, we're on schedule, uh, you know, like everything else, there were certain issues that come up, um, we, we've been tackling them as they've come up. Uh, uh, supply chain issues have caused a little bit of grief here and there, but we've got good viable plan Bs for a lot of this stuff. So, uh, as we stand now, there's really, there's, there's nothing that's, that, that jumps up as a concern for being done on schedule. Um, you know, things can change, but we'll, we'll, we'll deal with it as they come up.
Well, thank you so much, Jay.
I'm gonna demote you, but it's, it's not because of, you know.
It's nothing personal, yeah. Good night. And Norm, thank you too, uh, the Steve and Michelle and the leadership team. I, I know that how much work has been put into this project, um, and it's, it's great, so, kudos. Um, all right, so we'll move on to personnel and see if I can hand it over to you for this, for the three, um, two action items and a discussion.
Sure, just, uh, real quick, we're pleased to bring George Sable forward as the permanent sub. Um, this is a position that we have advertised for, for a while. Um, we've had one pop in and one pop out early in the year, but this will continually support um, our ability, if we have to quarantine or if we have to isolate things like that, so it's, it's welcome, it's great to bring George. George has been a, a coach for this before and is certainly a fixture in our community, so, um, welcome to George. He's also on the nominee for the next piece, which is our spring coaches. Um, and it is, though, we did, um, we, based on COVID, where we're at, the assistant coaches are part of this nomination, including George as an assistant track coach. So those are both action items tonight.
Happy to see George come aboard, I just kind of chuckled a little bit because he just retired from one job and now he's coming to the district, so.
We didn't leave him, and those people weren't moved much, I mean, we, we put him right to work, so.
Yeah, yeah, I know, it's great, I just thought it was fun, thank you.
And, uh, just every once in a while, I'll continue to provide a kindergarten update. Um, we have, I, I checked in today, we have forty-five, um, registered kindergarteners, and, uh, last year at this time, we had thirty-nine. So we're a little ahead of our pace and, and, you know, obviously this is a three-section, four-section usually discussion where we are as we go, but I think we're on pace for our traditional four sections, but we'll keep you updated every other meeting or so and see how it's going, but we're at forty-five.
Any questions on any of those items? All right, um, so we'll keep trucking along in, uh, the school board schedule that was in our packet.
And, and just the only, the only, Michelle and I spoke, um, originally, this is, we were planning three public hearings back to back to back because we've got to fit them all into Seth, no. Um, that we were planning on an S or two public hearing to receive federal funds, but we haven't quite solidified the number yet. And so as soon as we get that direction from the DOE, then we'll plan it, it doesn't make too much sense to have a public hearing and not know much yet. So, um, but Michelle and I will keep you posted, so that'll be a change on the schedule, but everything else is, is systems go, and I'll continue to update that schedule now through, and as I alluded to, Seth will have one more meeting. Um, that'll be the eighteenth, and then, um, the next meeting after that will be April first, and that'll be the meeting of the new board. And we're gonna get right into, you know, um, we'll be discussing HEA nominations and, and all that fun stuff, so. Um, but I will do my best to keep the board up to date or updated on the schedules for your planning and for your calendars.
Sounds good, any, any questions or comments on the calendar? Steve, I appreciate you putting that in the packet every couple of weeks, it's, it's great to be able to look ahead at that, so, um, thank you.
So no five o'clock meeting next week, uh, next meeting, just so you know.
Don't speak too soon, Steve.
That's true, that's.
All right, so next up is financial, and we had a, uh, public hearing before this meeting at five o'clock to discuss items for withdrawal from the building, um, the building repair and maintenance fund, and so I guess, um, we didn't have any public comments, and so I just would, uh, just ask the board if they have any comments. And if not, this is an action item, um, and just make sure everybody's, is feeling good and prepared for that. All thumbs up, that's a good sign. Um, all right, and we have some accepting the funds, and so that's always a good thing, so Steve.
And I, I appreciate, um, this agenda item, we saw and I work very closely together. Um, and this is really, it's, it's a procedural, but it's an important, and it's, and it's a public opportunity. So when the district receives funds, uh, our policy says, um, that we have to formally accept it. So tonight, I, I, uh, hopefully you saw the memo in, in the, in, in the packets. Uh, honored, always honored to, to, to lead or organize and facilitate the selection of the Susan Graham Bozinski Award, and so two thousand dollars have been received, and what Michelle and I are working on, um, there's actually some, uh, funds in excess that we've held, we're actually returning those back to the Hampshire Charitable Foundation so they can go back into the fund and earn interest. Um, we're, we're tidying that up. Um, and in the Susan Graham Bozinski Award was started actually my first year in district, the first award winners were in the, the spring of two thousand, so. Um, and coming out soon will be our newsletter, in part, one of the big pages in the newsletter is every single to Susan Graham Bozinski Award winner is, is out, so that's coming. Um, we also receive health trust dollars, it's just a part of our health insurance, it's five hundred dollars for each school, so we'll accept that tonight. And I appreciate working with, uh, the new trustee of the trust fund, Steve Lux, he and I have been in, in discussion. And Neil Cass always supports us, so just procedurally, um, the, the just, the district needs to just accept, um, the scholarship funds, and then typically, we turn the funds over to the charitable trust, uh, sorry, to, uh, the trustee of the trust funds in Hopkinton, and they do the disbursement each year regarding the scholarships, but, um, we have, um, established the Houghton Trust, which supports the World Language Exchange, that was a, a bequeath or be, that someone had left that scholarship when I was early in my superintendency. Um, this year is a new scholarship, started to honor Liz Cross in, in her experience, so that's a new scholarship. Um, uh, we have the Slusser Student Growth Scholarship, um, that i- is for any student, and it provides some unique opportunities like outward bound and things like that, so we're accepting that funds. And the Sherry Moro Scholarship is also new this year to honor Sherry and her world, and her work and her experience in the community. And going back, just to, to make sure we had a, 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 an action item in record, Travis Aubrey Scholarship. Um, that was established for Travis, who's one of our students, uh, one of my students, but I was there, um, to honor his memory. So, um, it'll be really nice to have all this codified and supported and working with Steve to make sure the funds get there for, for their purposes and their ability to grow and disperse through the fund. So thank you for allowing, um, this procedural work and, and certainly to give some credit publicly. Just some great work and, and working with people on scholarships is one of the joyous things I.
Uh, any questions for Steve on any of those? All right, and those will be action items, um, thank you, Steve, that was a great intro. All right, so we have. All right. So we have, we've gone through the agendas. We're now at the. Second public comment portion of the meeting. And so I would just ask if anybody who is attending. Wishes to provide public comments that if you move your cursor down towards the bottom of the screen, there's a raise your hand button. You can click on that and that'll let us know that you have a public comment and I would just ask that you give us your name and address. For the, for the record and then. Try to keep your comments around three minutes. That would be great.
And I tried to bump up Seth. I think he's in the ether in the world right now.
You'll find his way. So I'm not seeing any hands for public comment. Nope. I have one, two. There we go. Darling Gilder sleeve.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. I have a hard time reading and talking fast, but I will absolutely try. Thank you, Norm, for asking for the data. To support the decision on not to reopen most of the classes to full time. About the three foot distancing and running some hypotheticals. I think that's a great idea, you know, to, I think it's really important to have that data and also to post it publicly on the website for parents to go over. I also want to thank Norm for bringing up outdoor classes in the spring. I've know, I've heard that. From other districts and it's, it was great actually in the fall. So I think it's something that. The district can really look towards in the spring. And. I think another great idea is if board members can actually call private schools themselves. And actually learn and explore how private schools have been open full time. Since the very beginning of September with no outbreaks at all that were reported. I think that would be good. And so no answer on this question is really needed now. But if kids are approved to do indoor sports. Which happens to be less than six feet apart. And especially without masks or even with mask, why can't they be masked and in school and person to be educated? And why are sports prioritized more than in-person education? Especially in Hopkinton, I find that. Much to my disbelief that, you know, I just really feel that sports are. Put before anything else and. I'm very concerned for kids that don't play sports. The opportunity for socialization seems non-existent for those kids. And it really seems like they're being penalized for not playing sports. And it just seems really unfair that they can't go back to school. Not all kids with 504 and IEPs who need. And really, I mean, really need in-person learning or getting their needs met. Last. Earlier, last week, Principal Kelly said that there just wasn't enough room to accommodate. The kids with special education needs that had to go back. I asked the board members to please take a look at the state testing scores for our kids with free and reduced lunches. And IEPs, myself and another parent had asked. Steve Chamberlain to prepare that report and that report was presented to the board just before COVID. It's run by the DOE under aggregated data. And again, it's for kids who get free and reduced lunches and IEPs. If you'll please take notice of the fifth grade test scores, they were in the eighth percentile. And. It was, it was just unacceptable. If these kids who were already in the eighth percentile for testing scores before COVID. Are not brought back for in-person learning. Now you can just imagine. How negatively these kids, our most vulnerable population will be impacted. My hope, and I asked this before to the school board, a couple of, of different times. Is that a case manager in every single grade. Would be fully accountable for test scores for kids with special education IEPs and for ADA 504 plans. That they're fully accountable by providing, going over the test scores. And communicating with parents before the kids fail the classes. Unfortunately, special education students are still failing without any accountability to educators. And case managers. Okay. And then Mr. Kelly just brought up the New England Accreditation Board. Why is a formal communication plan that is being recommended by a body of peers for special education? And communication between teachers being rejected. A formal plan can really uphold quality and accountability, especially at the high school. Freshmen and sophomores with IEPs are especially having a tough time. Please consider accepting recommendations from this professional organization rather than rejecting it. There's really good reason why they're recommending it in the first place. I asked that test scores, pass fail rates, IEP compliance. Measuring against goals and progress reports in regards to maintaining. IEP goals are looked at hard before the board decides to reject the recommendations of this professional association. That's a very important thing because my son, who is now twenty-one years old. Had a terrible time in high school. And when I shared his experience, other parents reached out to me. About their special education kids, again, especially freshman and sophomore year. That are failing, being held back or being forced to repeat one full year of classes. And it's, well, it's still happening. So again, Jim, I have. I think I already told you, I do have a disability that makes it very hard for me to talk and to read quickly. So I mean, I know you have no other hands up and no other people that want to talk, like you said. So I'm going to hurry up and spit it out, but I have a really hard time.
I, I appreciate it. I, I understand, Darlene, but we.
I have like one paragraph left.
Okay.
Let's see. And it's in addition, it's really important for high school special education case managers to actively communicate and collaborate. Collaborate with parents before a child struggles badly. So please, again, please seriously reconsider rejecting the recommendations of a professional association. I think it's a really bad idea for the vulnerable special education kids in high school. Lastly, to follow up about the New Hampshire School Board Association. Actively lobbying against the needs of our students in Hopkinton. If you could please let me know. And please let the people that are listening to the call know how much is paid yearly. To the district from taxpayer funds. In order to then funnel the money to the New Hampshire School Board Association. For these highly paid lobbyists to go against the needs of students and their families. And to get this dollar figure of how much is being paid to them, do I have to do a right to know request?
Thank you, darling.
One last question. Also, has the district actively looked into other organizations to collaborate with?
Thank you, Darlene, for your comments. I appreciate it. Next hands up is Jen.
Hi, can you hear me?
You sure can.
Hi, I just wanted to thank Principal Corozza and Superintendent Chamberlain and everyone and. Michelle Clark for getting the grant to allow those kindergarten and for first graders to come back. Full time or to hopefully come back full time. So I'm really happy that plan is going forward. I had to bite my tongue and not tell my kindergartner just in case it doesn't work out. But I know that she will be thrilled. She has even asked to do kindergarten again next year. Because she feels she hasn't gotten kindergarten. So yeah, so she will just be thrilled if that happens. And I just had. A thought on. A couple of ways to possibly encourage parents to volunteer to switch. Possibly moving. One of the IAs from one of the classrooms that some kids are familiar with. To the new teacher. I, if I'm correct, I believe each kindergarten teacher has. A teaching assistant. That isn't assigned to specific students, but just to help the whole class. So. Am I correct on that? Do you know? Does anyone know?
Yeah, roughly, yeah, Jen, roughly.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. So maybe like I, for example, like I know that my kindergartner absolutely loves the teaching assistant in her class. So, you know, if I happen to know that that teaching assistant would be with the new teacher. That may make me as a parent more likely to volunteer. So it was just a thought I had. And then of course I do have to. Just push the reading and whoever you guys look to hire. I know that there's a huge workforce shortage and it's hard to hire people right now. But just, you know, really trying to find. A kindergarten and first grade teacher that really understand the science of reading and really embrace that. And, you know, have some experience with foundations, which you guys use. Would be absolutely wonderful and. And that would be, you know, sharing that information with parents that a little bit. I know you guys can't share a ton of the background of teachers that get hired, but. You know, maybe sharing, oh, if you can share anything, share anything like that with parents that may encourage parents to volunteer to switch. So anyway, those were my thoughts.
And thank you so much.
Okay.
And we'll keep our fingers crossed along with you.
Yep.
Have a good night. Next hand is Jacob Ross.
So I have to. Jacob, just so you know, I got to promote you to panelist via version. So we may see you. I hope that's okay. Jay Ross, nice to see you.
Nice to you as well. Jacob Ross, eight thirty-four Main Street. I just wanted to do a big shout out to Bill and his staff for coming up with that unique. Solution for the K one and. You know, somebody, one, one of the board members had said that, that probably put a big smile on a lot of parents' faces and that, that was my face for sure. I think that, you know, there's a concern that you might not get enough people to volunteer. I think. If I, I don't want to speak for my daughter, but I think if I said you get to go five days a week, she would say, who are my new classmates? You know, that's kind of the response. I don't, I don't think that that would, I think there's definitely at least a, a dozen. Students who would probably feel comfortable doing that and have the personality for it. And the only other comment I had was. I work at a local area high school and, and we do the three feet. We're going back to a. For a five day. In next week, next Monday and, and with the three feet with the mass. When, when the question's asked, i- is it possible to even get like, you have a high school classroom. My classes are, have students. With as many as twenty-four students. Not all those students are going to want to come back. I've had at least a handful, half dozen students that have been just learning synchronously. The entire year because that's what they're feeling comfortable with. So even though my, I personally could not fit twenty-four students at three feet. In my classroom, that doesn't necessarily mean that there would be a need for it. So I know that just makes the, makes the, the, the question of. Is it possible even harder to figure out? But that was just something I thought of when, when that question, when that thought came up. That's all I have.
Jacob, thank you so much. I'm glad you're smiling. We've. Have a great night. Thank you.
Full transparency. He was my daughter's math teacher a couple of years ago.
Next hand that's up is Jeremy Fritus. Jeremy, you should be on mute yourself.
Okay, there we go. Good. Sorry about that. Hit the wrong button.
Now you're doing great.
Fritus fifty-six Old Anika Road. You know, Jacob, I think it obviously is absolutely possible. I think we've been a very slow to respond school board. Yay, my kindergartner can actually get into the classroom, maybe. April. I just wonder, you know, with so many other area schools looking to reopen full. What's the thinking with the slow play? Like three weeks out, four weeks out, hire new teachers. Lock ourselves into some kind of crazy commitment when. All indications are much better than this. And so I'd ask, like, could we consider something better than this? I mean. It just seems like we're slow playing, getting our kids back in the classroom and. So where's the alternate plan? I would like to actually see what we can do with three foot distancing in a month from now. Is that even being considered? And thank you, Mr. Goopel, for, you know, having a spine to dissent. It's okay to have a dissenting opinion. It's okay that you guys don't all walk lockstep. Because it seems like if anybody is falling out of line in this school board. Group like, oh, that's like shunned. No, it's, it's actually okay to not agree. And so thank you for raising this question because obviously it is the elephant in the room that we're somehow not discussing. So I guess I'll be the bad guy and just say, can we please discuss it?
I'm muted. So thank you, Jeremy, for your, am I still muted? No, I'm not. So thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. And we'll have more discussion on this topic.
Wonderful. Actual number. Current cases.
Oh, I'm not talking. I'm sorry. I was talking. I was on mute. I was saying, Jeremy, thank you so much for your comment. We are discussing and will continue to discuss these issues. So I appreciate it. And next hand up is Sarah Mattson Dustin.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for the really thoughtful and creative planning around the kindergartners and the first graders. It was just wonderful to hear that potential plan. I know it may be tricky to pull it off, but I wish everyone the best of luck. And really appreciate all of the effort that went into coming up with that idea. I wanted to ask a question. I was. Overjoyed today when I learned that my sister, who is a first grade teacher in Camden, up in Grafton County. Has already gotten through her school's partnership with their regional public health network, her appointment dates for her first and second vaccinations. And so I was curious if we have any sense of when the educators in our school district will have a similar opportunity. To get vaccinated.
Steve, I don't know if you have an answer. I mean, I, I don't and I haven't heard of any scheduling. So I don't know, Steve, if you have any different information.
I think there was a communication from Nicole Masters today regarding some dates and things, but I've been in meetings all the way through. So. I'm sorry, I don't know about any opportunity for regional health network, but we will certainly look into that and see where, but I. I thought Nicole had some dates for us to look for. Vaccination for teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. That's the next hand that has gone up is Susan Zankel. Hi, Susan, you should be on mute yourself.
Hi, Jim. This is Mark, actually, Zankel. Using Susan's phone. Can you hear me?
We sure can. And we can see Susan. So it's. It's the two for.
Great.
I'll take the credit maybe.
Yes. So anyway, yes, Mark Zankel, forty-five Crawl Road. I wanted to thank you, Andrea, for just the great overview that you gave earlier. On the, the update on, you know, CDC guidance and how you all are considering that and that you have ongoing conversations. Regular conversations with the school board, with the administration, with the HEA about return to school options. I'm glad that the intention is to have. All students and teachers in the classes, you know, as of the fall and earlier, as you said, if possible, that's good to hear. You know, just a couple of observations. It strikes me that, you know, I think our school. The school board has erred on the side of safety throughout this school year and. It's really hard to get this right. As you all know, I've generally felt like. That, that area on the side of public safety during the pandemic has been the right call. With lots of costs to it, we all understand. And, you know, now as we kind of get to this point. And trying to balance, you know, the health of our students. Related and their families and, you know, with related to COVID with mental health and mental health has been talked about a lot. And all the educational. You know, implications of not being there in person. I, it strikes me that the calculus around risk is starting to shift a bit. And then as you add in the increase in number of people, elderly people. And soon to be teachers who are going to be. and soon to be teachers who are going to be vaccinated, that it start, you know, is continuing to shift that risk reward calculus. So the question that I wanted to put to you, not so much to answer tonight, but that I think would be helpful is it would, I think it'd be really nice if you were able, you were able to spell out what are the circumstances and conditions and metrics that would need to be met in order for you to feel like we could go more in person, whether it's all in person or just more than we are doing now. You know, what are the thresholds that we need to meet in terms of teacher vaccinations, in terms of transmission rates? Because I think if, if the community knew that, they would know what are the benchmarks we need to hit and, or, you know, for the school board to say, yes, we can go more in person than we are now. So that's what I would love to see. I know it may be easy to ask for it, hard to do, but I think that'd be beneficial. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate your comments. And so it's not a complete answer, but I'll give a partial answer because Andrea did mention it in her opening remarks is that, you know, that we have been following CDC guidelines and recommendations and you could, you can find those on the CDC website and there's all sorts of versions of it that you can find in newspapers or in other places that's, that lay out, that's lay out some of those decision making around community, the level of community spread. And when, when and how mitigation occurs for that. So that is one place that I think you can look and find the CDC guidelines and recommendations for schooling and you'll find that our practices have been consistent with those guidelines. And that's been something that the board, our administration, our nurses have been encouraging and following through on. So appreciate that. I would, I guess I would ask if, if you've provided comments and you haven't lowered your hand that you do so. All right, just got a mixture of hands going down and coming up. So I apologize. So I guess I'll call on Susan Zankel again, which I think might be Mark Zankel.
This is Mark Zankel. Thank you, Jim. I'm just going to follow up with, with one follow up question, which is if, if those conditions, you know, following the CDC's best guidance were met in terms of things like transmission rates, you know, our ability to have the spacing needed, et cetera. Is our, does our agreement, our current agreement with the HEA allow for us to return to full in person? I'm not sure I'm asking the question exactly the right way, but you know, I think it's, it's again, I'm just trying to understand what are all the things that would need to be, to happen? All the conditions. So if the health guidelines were met, would we be able to return to in person? Or are there other things that would need to, for example, be renegotiated?
Yeah, so we have a, we have a health and safety memorandum of agreement with both the HEA as well as with Hess. And so that is an ongoing conversation. And so, so that, that's, that's a factor as well as, as we mentioned, the CDC guidelines and the recommendations. So those are all sort of part of the, part of the picture that the board and administration and others are working on. All right. So thank you.
Thank you for trying to put me on spot.
All right. So next hand that's up is Darlene Gildersleeve. And so Darlene, I just asked, this would be your third time tonight, and if you could try to keep it to three minutes, that would be great.
No, I didn't have my hand up for any more comments. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. So another hand just came up with Mike Doherty.
This is Jane Doherty. I think you're probably, can you hear me?
I sure can. Yeah. Go ahead, Jane.
Jane Doherty, I'm at five seventy-three Dustin Road. And I just finished putting children to bed, so I kind of missed some of the earlier, I think, most of the public comment. But, and I, I think I might be asking a question that's already been asked or commented, but I'm just going to put it out there anyway. And it's just about the, the six feet of spacing as well and if other considerations as far as when the spring comes and windows are open, you know, the role that ventilation plays with you know, reducing spread of COVID. Teachers being vaccinated, it just seems to me like a big undertaking and I'm not an educator, so I don't know what it takes to like onboard a teacher. You know, starting in April. If other factors would be taken into consideration, knowing that WHO has a recommendation of a meter distance between, at least a meter distance between students. American Academy Pediatrics, three to six feet of, of distance. And just the increasing data that's coming out showing the safety of, you know, that six feet is kind of, it's dogma and it's, it's been something that's been around for a long time, but there's other factors that need to be considered. And if makes sense to do, I don't know, rather than having a whole student and breaking up classrooms for the kindergartners and the first graders, considering having a more full classroom. And I think you guys are probably beating a dead horse with this because it sounds like maybe the last person had commented on it.
Jane, thank you for the comments and I won't repeat everything that we said, but you know, the board is, the, the boards in discussions with the administration. And, and all these factors are being considered for how, how we move forward. And currently, you know, we're, we are operating with the CDC recommendations and their guidelines that they've published and they've put out. So that's our operating procedure, but all these other considerations are being discussed and factored as, as we move forward. So thank you.
Thanks.
Amanda Gilman.
Hello, everyone. First, my apologies for misunderstanding your intonations last meeting, Jim. It was very unclear to me and I totally misinterpreted what you said and I apologize for that. And my thanks to Andrea for her very direct and clear communication tonight. I very clearly hear what you're saying, so thank you. And thanks to Norm for asking that we consider the three foot X to consider, to explore three feet. I definitely would like to see this considered and I am sure that you probably are talking about this just. And I realize that it's not a consideration right now. You are following guidelines right now. I think that's been made very clear and no one's asking you to do anything different right now. What I'm looking for, and I think what a lot of parents are looking for, is some sort of plan for what conditions need to be met. And I, I think you're probably hearing this loud and clear. But everyone's still very tight lipped about where we're going with this or if anything is going to happen this year. And to have some sort of something to hold on to for parents of a metric like, well, if this, then this, if this, then this. And it's very much feels like heels are dug in right now and that we are not, this is not being considered for the rest of the year. And whether that's true or not, I have no idea. I, I just am trying to convey the frustration that it feels like, well, no, we're not going to do it. I do recognize and I appreciate that you're hearing the consideration for the littles, kindergarten and first grade. I think that's awesome. And I kind of wish second and third could also be included. I definitely wish because I think that they're struggling as well. So I appreciate that you are hearing people. I just ask that you continue to work on a plan, a forward plan for more than just September, that if things improve dramatically, if these metrics are met, we will be considering an alternative degree of getting more kids back in school. So I look very much forward to a proactive plan for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Appreciate it. With that, we have no additional hands. And so I'm going to close the public comment and move to the action items and what I will ask for the board, and we've been doing this our past couple of meetings. We don't have a non-public scheduled or any issue that I know of to have a non-public. But we will, I will ask that we have a non-meeting following this meeting. And for those who wonder what the heck a, a non-meeting is, a non-meeting is a statutory guide or at least it's in the statute under our public meeting guidelines for public bodies. For negotiation purposes, boards can meet in something called a non-meeting, which, which doesn't follow the same guidelines as, as right to know. And so they're not meetings that need to be actually noticed and or minutes taken. In this case, I think the board is comfortable letting people know it's sort of a notice that we are going to go into a non-meeting following our regular meeting. So with that, I'm going to pull up the action items here. And I would ask if there's a motion for the Huffington School Board to approve the superintendent's recommendation to withdraw the following funds from the Hopkinton School District Building Repair and Maintenance Fund, performance contract payment of forty-two thousand five hundred, MSS dishwasher and booster replacement of fourteen thousand five hundred dollars, MSS furniture at one thousand three hundred ten dollars, HMHS furniture at five thousand six hundred and ten dollars, HMHS steamer at six thousand five hundred dollars for a total of seventy thousand four hundred and twenty dollars.
They moved.
Second.
Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, Rob?
Rob NATO, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Fram, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes, so that motion passes. Is there a motion for the Huffington School Board to accept the recommendations of the building committee and approve phase two additional alternatives as presented?
So I like Norm, I'll second it. Norm can move it. I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion?
Thank you.
We'll let Norm go first. Norm Gupel.
Absolutely. Yes.
You gotta say your name.
Oh, Norm Gupel, absolutely, yes.
Rob?
Rob NATO, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes, that motion passes?
We, we also do have Seth.
Seth, I'm sorry.
Yes.
The motion has now passed. Five to zero. Thank you. Is there a motion for the Huffington School Board to approve the superintendent's nomination of George Sable, HMHS Permanent Substitute for the twenty twenty-one school year pending final approval of the superintendent of schools?
They moved.
Welcome back. Second.
Any discussion? Seth?
Seth A. Fram, yeah.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Rob?
Rob NATO, absolutely, yes.
Jim O'Brien is a yes. Perfect. Is there a motion for the Huffington School Board to approve the superintendent's nomination of the Spring Athletic Schedule B nomination slate as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Rob?
Rob NATO, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Fram, yeah.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes, that motion passes. And finally, is there a motion for the Huffington School Board to approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the funds as presented in? I assume that motion is okay, just as funds is presented. I'm just trying to think back.
In the memorandum, yeah, it was the, as presented in the memorandum, it probably would be better.
Or are you, are you still reading it or can I move it?
I think you can move it.
All right, I moved it.
So a second. Norm, did you second that?
I did second it.
All right, things are, things are falling apart here.
Come on, Normie.
All right, so the motion is made in second, and these are the donations and the memo that Steve outlined that we had discussed earlier. Any discussion? All right, Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Fram, yeah.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Rob?
Rob NATO, yes.
All right, and Jim O'Brien is a yes, and so that motion passes. Any other business that anybody wants to bring up before we adjourn? All right, hearing none. Thanks to everybody. Mia, thanks for, for sticking it out with us to eight thirty tonight. Appreciate it. And everybody have a great night. For board members, you should have an email for the link for the non-meeting, which if we could go to, it shouldn't take very long, I don't think. So if we could move there right after we adjourn here, that would be great. With that, thank you all so much. Have a wonderful night.